Good evening. Please stand for the opening prayer by the Honorable Merrick Richardson.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we look to you today. We give you thanks for how you have been keeping us. We thank you for your hand of protection upon us as a government and upon the lives of your people here in Anguilla. As we begin this meeting, we ask that everything we say and do will bring honor and glory to you and that all our discussions and decisions made will be made with Anguilla in mind. We ask that you continue to keep your hand upon us. Be with us in our goings out and our coming ends from this time forth and even forevermore. Amen.
Please remain standing for the national song.
God bless Anguilla. Nudge her and keep her noble and beauty as she stands midst the sea. O land of the happy, a heaven we'll make thee. Our lives and love we give on to thee. With hearts and souls we build our nation proud, strong and free. We love her, hold her dear to our hearts for eternity. Let truth and rights of banner be we'll march ever on. Let truth and rights of banner be we'll march ever on. Might he will make her long may she prosper. God grants our leaders wisdom and grace. Make glory and honor ever attend her. Firm shall she stand throughout every age. With hearts and souls we build our one nation proud, strong and free. We love her, hold her dear to our hearts for eternity. Let truth and rights of banner be we'll march ever on. Let truth and rights of banner be we'll march ever on.
Can you be seated? I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Minister of Finance Premier Dr. Ellis Webster. The Honorable Minister of Home Affairs, Mr. Kenneth Hodge. The Honorable Minister of Social Development and Education, Deanne Kentish Rogers. The Honorable Minister of Infrastructure Communication, Lieutenant Housen, Haring Hughes. The Honorable Minister of Economic Development, Investment, Commerce, Information Technology and Natural Resources, Mr. Kyle Hodge. The Honorable Parliamentary Secretary, Economic Development, Information Technology, Natural Resources Tourism, Ms. Quincya Gomes Marie. Honorable Ministerial Assistant in the Ministry of Social Development and Education, Mr. Merrick Richardson. Permanent Secretary of Finance, Ms. Kathleen Rogers. Mr. Von Lee Harris, Accountant General. Ms. Marissa Harden Hodge, PAS Finance. Permanent Secretary, Economic Development, Chanel Petty Barrett, Media Houses. Radio Anguilla, Class FM, Cool FM, Upbeat Radio. Staff of Dates, Gov.ai, Titanium Songs and In Anguilla, Lloyd Gomes Life. You, the audience, and those listening via the radio and social media. Good evening and welcome to the Government of Anguilla, State of the Nation Tongue Hall Program. I am Courtney Morton, Ministerial Assistant in the Ministry of Finance, your Chair for this evening's proceedings. Moving right along to our next item, I welcome to the podium the Honorable Premier Ellis Webster to give you the open remarks.
Adopting the protocol already established, good evening to all Anguillians, those here. And I see Nat Hodge of the Anguillian just come in. I don't know if you got him when you were introducing everyone or welcoming everyone, so welcome. And welcome to this State of the Nation. The Anguilla Progressive Movement Administration, we ran a campaign on transparency, accountability and good governance. We feel that it is essential that we come to the people. And time after time, we intend to allow you to know where the cut is and where it's headed. We know that the COVID-19 pandemic is upon us. And all borders were closed from March 20th of 2020, which has affected our tourism product. Since April 26th of 2020, we've been considered COVID-free. We've had three positive cases before that who have all recovered and we thank God for his mercies upon us. And we were looking into getting Anguillians who were stranded abroad back home. And so far, we've repatriated 373 persons, Anguillians. And 65 who were brought for medical reasons, who are now back. Making a total of 438 persons that have been repatriated back to Anguilla. And so far, we remain COVID-free. And I want us to thank God for that. Also want us to thank the Chief Medical Officer, the Ministry of Health, the Governor's Office, the United Kingdom Government for all the assistance they have provided and for this to happen. But we understand that Anguilla has to open because our economy is stagnant with tourism being our main industry. And so with that, we have to make a balanced and phased opening. And that is the process that we are now undergoing. Our hospitality workers who have not been working are now served with termination letters is looking into that. We have continued the unemployment benefit of $1,000 EC dollars per month for those who qualify through social security. And we raised the benefit from 800 EC dollars a month to 1,000 EC a month for those who do not qualify under the social security. We want to thank our partners, Anglec, the Water Corporation, telecommunications companies such as Flow and Digicel for their no-cut policies. We want to thank the NCBA, National Commercial Bank of Anguilla Republic Bank for moratoriums on loan payments for six months with the plan to extend if needed. I want to thank our teachers for going back to school when it was necessary for the schools to reopen back in May. And now that school has opened last Monday. Thank the civil servants. We want to thank especially our frontline workers, doctors and nurses, hospital workers, healthcare workers, police, fire service sanitation workers, grocery store clerks for helping to get the country going and to work in spite of the chance that they could become exposed to this COVID-19 coronavirus. I want to thank our fisher folk and our farmers because they have maintained this country, providing food source and continuing to maintain their activities. But most of all, I want to thank you, the public, because you have followed the protocols. You have adhered to the rules and you've helped to protect our borders to keep the dreaded disease out of Anguilla. Tonight, you will hear about the financial state of this nation. You will learn of the financial position of the statutory bodies and the contingent liabilities. That is, the future obligations that they have and the implications on government, on our financial position. You'll understand that the financial crisis in Anguilla did not start with Hurricane Irma on September 6th of 2017. But by September 5th, 2017, the economy was in negative numbers. Reserves were depleted and the national debt was over 500 million EC dollars. The COVID-19 pandemic has dealt Anguilla a horrible blow economically, but that does not get us to where we are right now. The economy was bad before we closed on March 20th of 2020. We must thank the United Kingdom Government and the United Kingdom taxpayers for the 60 million pounds humanitarian aid post Hurricane Irma, which has allowed construction jobs as we restore the schools, the hospital and the health centers. And for the emergency COVID-19 financial aid of 100 million EC dollars, which has provided budgetary support. But Anguillians, we are resilient. We are strong, we are proud and thank God we are free. And so we must go on. And we will have to make hard, tough decisions as we help Anguilla to recover and get on the right track. And I know you elected us for a purpose. And that purpose is to make sure that we look out for the people of Anguilla at all times and make sure that we leave Anguilla better than we met it. And so I want to assure you that this Anguilla Progressive Movement Administration, your government, will always put people first as we bring about the change that you voted for, the change that can't wait. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you, Premier. The next following presentations will be our question and answer sections. We have a microphone that's standing in the hallway. You can walk up and ask your questions after the presentations. Next is the Government of Anguilla Financial Position as of December 31st, 2019 and June 30th, 2020. The presenter will be Von Lee Harris, our Accountant General.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to establish the protocol already established. My name is Von Lee Harris. I am the Accountant General, the Treasury Department, and I would be presenting the State of the Nation from a financial perspective. 2019 ended with a recurrent surplus of 21.9 million dollars. This came about from a 2019 approved budget. The recurrent revenue was 200, but we collected 234 million, giving us a surplus of 25.74 million. Under recurrent expenditure, 213 million, where we underspent by 1.9, which gave us an actual of 212 million dollars. Then 35 million, but unfortunately, we only collected 16.78 million dollars. Capital like point eight, but due to the amount of revenue we collected on the capital side, we only spent 10.9. Moving to current year, from January to August 2020, we budgeted to collect on the recurrent revenue side, 100 dollars. Due to COVID-related circumstances, we only collected 162 million, which is a deficit of 17.79 million. On the recurrent expenditure side, we budgeted to spend 150.58 million. However, we only spent 132 million dollars, also underspent by 17.76 million. Capital revenue, we budgeted to spend and we spent just that. The same goes for capital expenditure, 64 million and we spent 4.64 million. Overall, showing you on the screen, from January to August, our estimate was 179, but we only collected 162 million on the performance of 17.79 million. Our revenue streams. Based on our budget, property, taxes on property, these would include property taxes, estimated to collect 2.97 million from January to June. We collected 2.8 million dollars. Taxes on income, those 8.3 million, we collected 7.8 million. Taxes on domestic, those are taxes such as accommodation tax, stamp duty, bank deposit levy, environmental levy, tourism marketing licenses. We budgeted to collect 11.35, however, we budgeted to collect 17 million dollars, however, we only collected 13.45 million. Other revenue, and we collected 1.6. Rents, interest and dividends, the budget was 720,000, we collected 430,000. Giving us a, from January to June, 130, actuals from January to June was 100 million dollars. The performance from July to August, on the budget side for property tax, we expected to collect 2 million. We only collected 770,000. Taxes on income, 8 million dollars, 8.6. Taxes on domestic goods and services, we budgeted 11.74 million, we only collected 9.67 million. Taxes on international trade and transactions, we budgeted to collect 16.95 million, but we only collected 10.53. Licenses, the budget was 2.3 million, we collected 1.75 million. Fees, fines and permits, the budget 5.54 million and we collected 5.59 million. Other revenues, we budgeted to collect 1.14 million, actual 560,000. Rents, interest and dividends, we budgeted 420,000, we only collected 40,000. And the last column, which is the UK grants, it wasn't really budgeted, but due to the COVID-related, we got assistance from the UK government, which to date between April and June, the total was 30 million. In April, they gave us 10.6 million, in May, 11.8 million and in June, 8.16 million. So now we're going to move to expenditure. This is recurrent expenditure. We budgeted to spend 150.58 million, but we actually spent 132.8 million dollars, which is a underspent of 17.76 million. Our expenditure heads, our items would be personal emoluments, those would be salaries, retiring benefits, interest payments, goods and services and recurrent transfers. From the period January to June 2020, we budgeted on the personal emoluments to spend 42.29 million. We only spent 41.17 million. Between July and August, we budgeted to spend 14 million, but we spent 14.35 million. On the retiring benefits, January to June, we budgeted to spend 4.98 million, we spent 5.05 million. We spent five point zero five million. Between July and August, we budgeted to spend one point eight two, but we spent two point five five million dollars. Interest payments, January to June budget, eight point six five million, but we spent eight point nine six million. July to August, budget was two point four one million, and we spent two point two eight million. Goods and services, January to June budget, twenty million, and we spent twenty two point seven seven million. July to August, seven point six six million was budgeted to be spent, and we spent five million dollars. Current transfers, January to June, we budgeted to spend thirty six point two three million, and we spent twenty point seven two million. July to August, the budgeted amount was twelve point four two million, and the actual spent was nine point nine four million. Overall, January to June budget, we expected to spend one hundred and twelve million dollars, but we spent ninety eight point six seven million dollars. For the period July to August, we budgeted to spend thirty eight point three five, and we actually spent total four point one five million. So now moving on, we're going to highlight some specific expenditure items. So the first one we have is subventions. In twenty nineteen, total subventions was thirty two point eight million dollars. January to June twenty twenty, we spent fifteen point six million dollars. And July to August, we spent eight point four million dollars. Consultancy services costs, twenty nineteen, we spent five million. January to June, one point six million, and July to August, nine hundred thousand. Training, these would be scholarships granted. Two thousand and nineteen, we spent three point two million. January to June, we spent one point one million, and July to August, we spent eight hundred thousand. Overseas travel, twenty nineteen, we spent two hundred and fifty seven thousand. January to June twenty twenty, we spent one hundred and two thousand, and July to August, we only spent twenty thousand dollars. Rent, this rent refers to the government building, which is the former NBA building. The money spent from January to August twenty twenty is one million dollars in rent. Monthly, we spend one hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars per month in rent for the building. Electricity, electricity for the entire public service is on average four hundred thousand dollars. For the government building, former NBA building, it is twenty five thousand, four hundred and forty thousand, four, twenty, sorry, twenty five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars average per month. The cost to retrofit the NBA building came to a total of nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and four cents. Okay. So now we move on to the unemployment assistance, which is due to COVID, we had to give assistance to people who are unemployed. Between the period of January to June, April to June twenty twenty, the government spent three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dollars. For the period July to August, the government spent one hundred and seventy six thousand, four hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty eight cents. Social Security side, which starts from July, they spent one point six nine five million dollars. So now we'll break it down how it was spent per month. So for the period of, period of April, we spent a hundred and twenty three thousand, and that eight hundred dollars was given to a hundred and sixty eight people. The month of May, we spent a hundred and one thousand dollars, and that was given to a hundred and thirty three people. June, we spent a hundred and twenty five thousand, that was given to a hundred and sixty seven people. July, we spent a hundred and eighteen thousand, that was given to a hundred and twenty three people. August, we only spent fifty eight thousand, that was given to sixty three people. Social Security side, they paid one point six million dollars to one thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven individuals in Angola. Subventions. Okay, so subventions. For twenty nineteen, the Angola Health Authority, we gave sixteen point six million dollars per annum. For the period of January to August, they received twelve million dollars. But as on the screen, I have it broken down from January to June and July to August. The Angola Tourism Board, in twenty nineteen, they received ten point one million dollars. Between the period of January and August, they received five million dollars. ASPR, which is the Angola A N C Board Authority, they don't usually receive a subvention from government of Angola. However, due to COVID and its decline on their revenues, they asked for assistance. So during the period of January and August, they received two point one million dollars. The same is for water corporation, they received to date four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. The Angola Community College, twenty nineteen, they received three million dollars. For the period January to August, they received two point one million dollars. The Angola Finance, they received five hundred and fifty thousand. To date, they received three hundred and sixty thousand. The Angola Chamber of Commerce, twenty nineteen, they received one hundred and sixty seven thousand. To date, they received one hundred and eleven thousand. Dalbina Lake Hodge Comprehensive School Board of Governors, twenty nineteen, they received one point seven million dollars. To date, twenty twenty, they received one million dollars. The Angola Hotel and Tourism Association, they received two hundred and fifty four thousand, and to date, they received one hundred and sixty three thousand. The National Trust, they received three hundred and sixty thousand for the year twenty nineteen. From January to August, they received one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So now we move on to debt. And this is central government debt. Okay, so this is the overall debt that government has. In twenty nineteen, the government spent overall forty six point seven million dollars in debt payments. However, the debt stock and at the end of December was four hundred and sixty seven million dollars. That debt comprised of domestic debt, which is a loan that government take, took from the Eastern Cambrian Central Bank, Angola Social Security Board, Depositors Protection Trust, European Investment Bank, and CDB Caribbean Development Bank. For the period January to August twenty twenty, the government spent in domestic debt thirteen point three million. That interest payments, government spent thirteen point three million, and on their external debt side, nineteen point six million. It gives us an overall total of thirty three million dollars the government spending debt. At the end of August, the overall government debt decreased to four hundred and forty eight million dollars. Remaining debt to be paid, the domestic debt, eight hundred, eight point eight million dollars. On the external side, six point three, six point three million dollars. Total overall debt for September to December is fifteen million dollars, which brings the overall debt stock, which will start into twenty twenty one, four hundred and forty million dollars to be repaid. Okay, so of that debt, we move on to the debt that is associated with the bank resolution. For the bank resolution, we have a loan taken from the Central Development Bank, and that is the bank recapitalization loan, the Angola Social, Angola Social Security Board, promissory notes, Depositors Protection Trust at CCB and NBA. In twenty nineteen, the government spent overall sixteen point nine million dollars paying back, which ended the debt stock at three hundred and sixteen million dollars. The period January to August twenty twenty, the government spent eleven point six million, which ended the debt stock at three hundred and ten million dollars. Left to pay from September to December, eight million dollars, which would decrease the overall debt for the end of the year at three hundred and six million dollars. The next debt item is the Depositors Protection Trust, brought at the former CCB and NBA. The year twenty nineteen, the government repaid six point six million dollars, which decreased the doctor debt stock to forty four million. Between the period January to August twenty twenty, we paid three point two million, which decreased it to forty one million, and left to pay for the remainder of the year is three point two million, which gives it a total outstanding debt of three point thirty eight point three million dollars to the Positiv Protection Trust. Government of Angola cash position. So this year is the monies we have in our bank accounts, physical cash. At NCBA, which we call our consolidated fund, December twenty nineteen, we ended overdrawn by two point three million dollars. June twenty twenty, it was overdrawn by twelve point eight million dollars. And now, ending August, we are positive eleven point nine million dollars. The sinking fund, that is our account that we have at NCBA, that is used specifically to pay amortization. And ending December twenty nineteen, the balance was seventeen point nine million dollars. Ending June twenty twenty, nine point eight million dollars. And ending August twenty twenty, four million dollars. We have another account at NCBA that we call CRIF. This is the Caribbean Catastrophic Risk Insurance Facility. This is insurance that we have on the island in the event where a hurricane happens. Ending December twenty nineteen, the balance was three point three million dollars. Ending June twenty twenty, three point three million dollars. And ending August, three point three million dollars. Another account at NCBA is the Irma Relief, and that was done for Irma reconstruction. In twenty seventeen, we received eighteen million dollars. So those funds was allocated to that specific account to make payments to us, the people who received damage of our properties. Ending December twenty nineteen, the balance was fourteen thousand dollars. Ending June twenty twenty, thirteen million. And ending August twenty twenty, thirteen thousand. At Eastern Caribbean Central Bank, we have an operating account that we use there also. The limit on that is seventeen million. At the end of December twenty nineteen, it was overdrawn by five point five million dollars. Ending June twenty twenty, overdrawn by twelve point five million dollars. And the ending August twenty twenty, overdrawn by twelve point seven million dollars. Reserves, not so good. Yeah. Ended December and continued on to date at five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And the last item we have is arrears of revenue. Arrears of revenue is monies that the public owe to government in unpaid taxes. Ending two thousand and nineteen, it was seventy nine million dollars on the street unpaid to government. During the period January to August, it decreased to fifty six million dollars. So you know, you have to tank inland revenue, they are actually going over there, recouping monies from the street. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for that report. The floor is now open for any questions.
Good evening. My name is James Lake, AKA Linking. I'm here, I just want to say to everyone here that I believe that this change of government was for purpose. I don't think that you all went into details yet and other things that you found up to now, but I hope you'll hear it as we go on during the night. But I do believe that this government change for purpose, based on what I'm hearing out there from the public. But one thing I want to say to the gentleman there, I realize that every month, the one thousand dollars keep going down in terms of persons, when so many people out there in the public still cannot get the thousand dollars. And they applied for it, but something is not working within that office where they're not getting it. So I realized you had a decrease in persons as the month goes on, when you should have an increase, when you got less people working. So you could tell us what's going on with that particular office?
Thank you, sir. If I could add some clarity, so in the August figures, I think the accountant general would have noted that some sixty something persons would have received benefit. And as you rightfully noted, it's quite a drop off from the previous months. That is simply because the August payments are still being worked through. What we do have is persons are coming on board, and when they come on board, applying for the unemployment assistance, they're not only applying for the August month, but they're applying for all the months beforehand. So it is a lot for the team to work through, and the team is working as earnestly as possible. And August payments are still being processed. So you will see that number increase in subsequent months.
I have a problem with what you're telling me, because we have a civil server, civil service that prior to the election, when they was told that they're going to get a reduced salary, they all had meetings, quick meetings, to rectify, to make sure they get all their monies. Where you can make sure the people of Angola who is suffering by somebody who is in charge, making sure that that office can get that money out to the people who is in need. Something need to be done to make sure the monies get out to the people, because people are suffering. People need that monies. So something need to be done by the government to make sure that that money is reached to people, because I'm want, I'm hungry.
Understood. One of the priority items in relation to processing unemployment assistance benefit was reviewing the system that facilitates the receipt of the applications. It was thought that once that is upgraded and made some amendments, it would be able to assist in the process for application easier, as well as assisting the team in reviewing the applications quickly and getting those payments out as quick as possible.
Hi, my name is, well, good evening, my name is Karima from Reda Angola. I'm just wondering the information that you just put out there for us to see. Can we find this on the government's website, or is it published already? You think so?
It's not published as yet, but it will be made available.
Okay, thank you. Would you be letting us know exactly when, as soon as possible? Maybe bring it out, Reda Angola, and let us know.
Probably for the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Conrad Gams. My name is Conrad Gams, better known as Scotta. I have two very important questions. The first one, the first one is concerning the former National Bank of Angola. The building. I want to know who owned that building? And if we paying rent for it, if we would ever own that building? Or we are only renting that building? I don't know who could answer that question, but I would like for that question to be answered.
Thank you for that question. The former National Bank of Angola created a company called Angola Asset Holding Limited. And in that company, found that it put the place of four properties. There's a property in Shoal Bay with eight acres of land. There's another property in Little Harbor, another 10 acres of land. And an acre of land overlooking Limestone Bay with the National Bank of Anguilla building. That building now has a caution of $42 million EC dollars placed on it by a bank in Dominica for a loan, which all took to subsidize.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, the $56 million owed by the public, I would like to know how many years that accumulated up to $56 million?
Can you repeat the question, please?
The $56 million owed to the government by the public, I would like to know how many years that money had been accumulated?
That would be accumulated over a period between eight to 10 years.
I consider that to be careless. To have people owe the government money over eight years is not revenue collecting good enough, in my view. You understand, we need to educate our public that if we want Anguilla to grow, they got to make their contribution. And if their contribution is paying tax, they should be paying the taxes. Now, there are some people who have not paid taxes in many years and they can afford to pay the tax, but they are not paying. The same way the National Bank of Anguilla collapsed because the small man was paying his loan and the big boys walking over there were not paying their loan. The same way the government is going to collapse if we continue to just collect revenue from the small man and leaving these guys owe $300,000 and $400,000 and he paying it. Some of them dying and didn't get them paid. And you don't know what happened to them. As yet, the government getting nothing from it. That is not good for collecting revenue in this country. And I'm one guy who believe in principles. We leave Anguilla and we go to the United States for two weeks. And we pay more taxes in the United States in two weeks. Then we pay in Anguilla in one year. And we don't want to pay when we have to pay it. These are areas that government need to look in. And I got to tell you, my view is the inland revenue is a bit slack in collecting government taxes. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, but I can reassure you. Thanks for your comment, but I can reassure you that inland revenue, we are in the process of revamping our compliance efforts. And we are aware of those individuals who are non-compliant. However, we have a duty obligation to ensure that all persons have the avenues available to ensure that they're compliant. But for those who choose not to pay their taxes, we will be taking action.
Yeah, I just want to, I don't think you will get some clarity in the building in the terms of, are we going to own it? Are we going to own the building eventually? And how much years before we can own it? We need to know as, because I don't think you all answer that part.
Well, presently, government is looking into owning that building, but it's going to take a process of a while. So you have to bear with us a little bit. But the process has already begun in researching the owners of the property and how we could go about in owning that building.
Because I am saying is, they own all these things within this company. And the company did not pay their dues to Dominica. Why then we don't probably get the way to follow those other stuff and try to pay off this loan and own the building or something? But we have to make some steps because it's very costly and the poor people of this country every month to pay that huge amount of money. But we love the building, I must tell you. It's a very nice building, it's really outstanding fit. Our new premier very well, I think he fits in it very well. Yeah, I must tell you. And it's something I always said that we should own. So I don't have anything against owning it, but we should own it and not be paying forever because the long term is not going to work. It must be a short term. Remember, I was on the tourism board when we used to rent. And you know what we decided to do? We decided to build and we went and we took a loan to build that building that we have now. And today, we are not paying any rent. So I'm saying we got to start to save the people by owning and not paying rent.
Thank you. Could I have just two more questions, please, as we have to proceed with the other presentations? Thank you.
Just on the question of the N B A. Just on the question of the N B A building and who is the owner? If I understand it correctly, the government or N B A owed the government of Dominica monies. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Let me, let me rephrase, sorry. National Bank of Anguilla created a company back in 1990. It's called Anguilla Holding. National Bank Building was created into this company. On a monthly basis, National Bank would create this company to rent for the building. And in turn, they take the rent and the pay to the bank in Dominica.
And I want, I understand the basic theory is that...
If a borrower owes money to a lender, the borrower always has the right to pay and redeem its property.
Correct.
So I think the question which we are concerned about is the transfer of that building, which at first blush would seem to contravene that principle.
Correct.
Yes. So my suggestion or my question would be, what steps would the government be taking to ensure that in the final analysis, N B A is in fact returned to the people of Anguilla? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm guessing I'm the last person to ask.
Sorry, guess somebody, please. Guess somebody, please, to answer the N B A.
Yeah.
The shareholder.
I'll take this.
Thank you.
So that's an excellent question that you asked. When Courtney joined the Ministry of Finance, that was one of the first things that I asked him to look into. And he started when, August? And it took us a while to find who owned the building. In fact, it took us having to send emails to one of the lawyers in town to get a release of the information. Sounds like a big reverberation. Maybe I should use the other mic. Can you hear me well? Okay. So yes, so it took us a while to find out who owned the building. And so we found out about this company, Anguilla Asset Holding Limited, that was made up of former shareholders of N B A. So again, this would tell you that there was this incestuous mechanism that was going on in the bank. And so we're then able to find out about this company. And since then, we've been trying to find out what's the entanglement with the Bank of Dominica. And so when our plan was, why should we be paying $127,000 a month for a building? That basically, the government of Anguilla has bailed out N B A to the tune of, you can see, you know, $214 million for social security and $52 for the depositors trust, the high-end depositors. And so along with Courtney, the ministerial assistant and the Ministry of Finance and the P S Rogers, we decided that we should stop payments on this until we figure out what is going on and why the government should have to be paying. Because we are paying that money to the receiver. Now, the receiver is basically, we were paying to the receiver. The receiver was supposedly paying to this company. And so I think that this entanglement is something that we need to understand who owes who before we continue to put over a million dollars a year going to where we don't know into a hole, that we don't understand where it is. So that is where we are right now.
Can I ask one question? Okay, thank you. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but from my understanding, once you don't pay a bill for seven consecutive years, you are not legally liable to pay and to pay. And my question is, has any entity owing government ran past the seven-year statutes of limitations for this? And if so, what areas has this been done? And how will this affect us as a people? Sorry, I think I was corrected by a lawyer. He said six.
So again, with regards to the statute bar, there are... Yes, as part of our reforming our compliance and enforcement, these are actually transactions that we have to be looking into, which will be seeking advice from the legal chambers as to how we should proceed.
Is it six or seven? I don't know if that quite answers my question, but is it six or seven years?
Sorry. Yeah, it's seven years. Well, just for clarification, the respective legislation have various years as with regards to statute bars. So for example, the accommodation tax have a specific amount of years, the I S L property tax, et cetera. So again, this is advice we be seeking from the AG chambers as to how we should proceed.
Yes. Are we going to be discussing the Capjuluka issue with laying off? I have a question. Shall I hold it till later?
You could ask us that question later this afternoon after the Minister of Home Affairs.
I'll hold it, thank you.
Make his presentation. Sir? Excuse me, we do have a question to answer at the end of the program. We're going to ask your questions, Mr. Smith.
Oh, you're not ready for questions then? I'm here to ask a question. This question. I am Clive C., elder Clive C. Smith. I repeat, I am elder Clive C. Smith. Not only elderly, but elder in Christ. The question I'm going to ask is not intended for any confusion or criticism of any type or belittling anybody. I am proud of this government. And I am proud to know that one of our greatest portfolios as a government is that we are here for honesty and transparency. And that's wonderful. That is great. So the question I have to ask is this. Since coming to government, and this is across the board, anybody can answer it across the board, as many as want to answer can answer. Since coming to government and know that we are in active work in government, what has been our findings? And how we look at the work that we have to do? And since we are now working, would you say it is easier than you thought? Or is harder than you saw?
I, 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 I want to answer the elder, the elder. Thank you very much for that question. But I would, I would say this, it's what we expected. It's what we expected. And, and, and that means that we understood and we knew that it would be difficult. What we have found have shocked us, but we are able and prepared for the task at hand.
Thank you very much for those questions. Moving right along. Our next presentation will be around the M O U, Anguilla COVID-19 Emergency Financial Aid Program. And our presenter is Premier, the Honorable Dr. Lorenzo Webster.
Good evening again. And the, I do have a copy of the M O U here with me, but I think in the interest of the time, let's Marissa Harding Hodge give her presentation on the statutory bodies because some of that is embodied in the M O U. And then when it comes after, we'll discuss this because I don't want to hog all the time up front. So begging your indulgence.
Good evening, everyone. Sometimes we become a bit too over-reliant on technology. I just opened up my iPad and realized I have 6% left. So I'm going to make this quick. Good evening again. So as the Honorable Premier, Dr. Webster, would have indicated, the review of the contingent liabilities of the statutory bodies was one of the conditions, the provisions under the Emergency Financial Aid M O U that the government of Anguilla entered into with the United Kingdom government. This provision would have required a review of the significant liabilities related to the statutory bodies. Particularly, it was their contractual obligations, the loans that they had entered into, any unfunded deficits where their planned expenditure was greater than their revenues, their staff liabilities. For the most part, for the statutory bodies, they're all part of the Public Service Pension Fund. They contribute to that fund other than the Anguilla Social Security Board employees, which have their own staff pension fund. Some statutory bodies do not contribute to the public service pension fund. We also looked at their arrears, their revenue arrears and their expenditure arrears. Now, the expenditure arrears would drive liabilities. So we paid particular interest to the expenditure arrears. to the expenditure arrears. And we also looked at any potential or anticipated litigation which would result in expenditure Firstly, we have the Angula Tourist Board. Now, as you would note, the significant liabilities related to the ATB are their contractual obligations. So we've got 4.6 million in contractual obligations over the period of 2020 to 2022. Now, actually, you'll note that 2022 is only about 500,000, but that's because most of the contracts are expiring in the first quarter and second quarter of that year. So we have 1.29 million dollars in payments remaining for 2020, 2.7 for 2021, and then the 500,000 for 2022. Now, these contractual obligations may relate primarily to firms overseas in markets and areas where they're providing public relations services related to the Angolan tourism product. So there are contractors in the U.S., Puerto Rico, Latin America, the U.K. and Europe. The ATB's sole loan was for outfitting their office, obtaining and outfitting the current ATB offices. It was contracted in 2002 for a sum of 750,000 EC dollars, a 20-year term at an interest rate of 8.5%. Now, there were some early repayments, and now there's about $30,000 remaining in payments that are due between the end of the year and early in 2021. It's on track to be fully repaid by January 2021. Just a point on the last slide, there's no expenditure arrears for ATB, but they do have some revenue arrears that relates primarily to the St. Martin Ferry Terminal, monies owed by ferry boat operators, and as well as from hoteliers due to participation in road shows. For the Angula Community College now, we have significant projected unfunded deficits. For the period 2020 to 2025, they are estimating significant deficits. Now, it stops in 2025, not because the deficit trajectory is reversed, but simply because they don't have forward estimates beyond that period. It's a reasonable period to do projections in. These unfunded deficits add up cumulatively to a total of 5.6 million dollars over the six-year period. Now, what's driving these deficits is, one, the ACC has a significant subvention from the government which covers their financing. So in terms of the ratio of the government's subvention to total financing, it's 70%. So the ATB's budget is, the ACC, sorry, its budget is approximately 4.3 million, and the government provides them with a subvention of $3 million. So, but this subvention was reduced to cover a loan contracted by the government on behalf of ACC for their intended college campus facilities. Their subvention was reduced by, to facilitate payments on this loan. Because of this decline in their subvention, as well as increased costs in renting facilities, as well as their planned new hiring in 2021 and beyond, they're now showing significant shortfalls with these unfunded deficits. You'll also note that ACC has contractual obligations of approximately 705,000, and that remakes to their campus, the bottom floor. The top floor is not on contract, the top floor is on a month-to-month tenancy, so that's not included in that total. And also included in that total is a marketing contract with Thoughtful Digital Agency. Their revenue arrears primarily relate to former students who did not complete their course, and some of them would have left the island, so it's been difficult to obtain those revenue arrears of 100, approximately 182,000 as of July 31st. Okay, the Health Authority. So the Health Authority, like the ACC, is projecting significant shortfalls, budget shortfall, unfunded deficits of 6.5 million dollars for the period 2020 to 2024. 1.5 million of this relates to 2020. Now, the HAA notes that their fees have generally not been increased in 10 years, and they're intend to review these fees with an aim to increase certain fees to increase in their financial sustainability. Now, they have significant expenditure arrears of 3.8 million dollars. Notable amounts are due to Anglic, 1.5 million, approximately 390,000 to the Government of Angula, 436,000 to the Water Corporation, and another service provider they owe 154,000. Another EC, 1.2 million is due to other vendors. Now, the HAA does have a plan to pay these arrears down within the fiscal year, but before the end of 2020. That is because they're being provided additional, in addition to their 16.6 million subvention, they're being provided an additional 3.6 million, 3.1 of which is to be specifically applied to arrears with external vendors. There are some gratuities that are due. There is 1.57 million over the period 2020 to 2025 ordinarily. Health Authority has on-staff contracted workers, technical staff, and as these contracts expire, gratuities are due, and then they're renewed. So they have recurrent expenditure relating to these gratuities in the forward years, usually of 305,000 and 175,000 respectively going forward. In terms of contractual obligations, over the period 2020 to 2024, they have approximately 8 million dollars in contractual obligations. Now, these primarily relate to insurance and service agreements such as for their software. Now, to note in relation to the unfunded deficits, HAA has in 2020 and 2021 and forward years projected increases in their, significant increases in their patient care revenues. The subvention is intended to remain constant at 16.6 million in the forward years, but they are showing in their budgets increases in patient care revenues. It went from actuarials of 13.1 and 11.7 million in 2018 and 2019 respectively, and it's projected for 2020 at 14.8 million and for 2021 and 2022 at 15.5 million. Now, if these revenues increases are not realized, as in if they do not achieve these increases, then they will produce even larger deficits. There are some revenue arrears due to the nature of the business, you can't turn away patients who are emergency cases. So persons tend not to pay after treatment, and they're showing total accounts receivables of 2.3 million dollars. Of this, 856,000 relate to private pay accounts. There are some other amounts owed by insurers and Government of Angula for the social... From the Ministry of Social Development, when they take care of persons who are unable to cover their own expenses. Angula Air and Seaport Authorities, as you all may be aware, the Government of Angula would have closed its borders in March, and since then, movement to and from the island has been heavily restricted. This has significantly affected the budget of Angula Air and Seaport Authority, the revenues of the ASPR. And due to this, ASPR is now on revenue support. They're receiving a subvention from the Government of Angula. In the year 2019, ASPR did not receive any subvention from the Government of Angula. ASPR's expenditure arrears, ASPR has 6.2 million in expenditure arrears. ASPR does owe, like Health Authority, Anglic, to a sum of 1.48 million EC dollars. They do owe the Social Security Board, this is for the social security payments, 2.5 million EC dollars. They owe the government 1.2 million dollars related to ISL payments. Now, the statutory bodies are exempt from paying ISL, but their workers do have to pay, and the statutory bodies do deduct it from their worker salaries and remit it to government. So that relates to that money. ASPR, given their current financial challenges, there is little scope within their budget for them to service these expenditure arrears for the remainder of the financial year. ASPR has two loans, which the remaining payments due under these loans are 1.95 million dollars, which are expected to be fully paid by 2021. One was contracted in 2020 to purchase equipment. It was for a sum of U.S. 268.7 million, 268.7 thousand dollars. The other loan was related to financing for the repair of the roadway jetty. This sum was contracted in 2016 for EC 2.9 million dollars to be repaid within five years. ASPR is current with payments in both loans. There are some gratuities due for contracts. They also have contractual obligations of 4.39 million, 4.4 million dollars. Now, these are several short-term and long-term contracts, and they produce significant continual liabilities for the ASPR. Some of these contracts have been suspended due to COVID. The most significant of these contracts relate to consultancy or professional services supporting their desired airport development expansion. One of these contracts is related to producing a business case for the airport expansion. That contract is for some 600,000 annually, and there is also a success fee in it which presents a incalculable liability as it's 3% of the final transaction amount of the final transaction amount of the project. That final transaction amount is to be determined when a project to their vessels and airline operators. These accounts have been challenged since the weather event in 2017. It is unlike, the persons owing the money would have experienced the same challenges due to COVID as they are in the travel sector. That is a total of 1.4 million EC dollars. In terms of financial sustainability, ASPR has made the comment that it has identified that the current fees are archaic, and they do not fit within the mandate of the ASPR. They've noted that only through upward revision of the fees and revenue increases that ASPR may be able to meet its current obligation, sufficient funds for long-term investments. Next, we have the Water Corporation of Angula. The Water Corporation is also projecting unfunded deficits. Now, I want to highlight here that the budget that the Water Corporation, they did an original 2020 budget, they also did a revised COVID 2020 budget. So their unfunded deficits do change. The original budget would have provided a 2 million EC dollar unfunded deficit in 2020. It has thus been downward revised, so they're projecting about 1.8 million deficit spread over 2020 to 2022. Now, Water Corporation of Angula did not receive a subvention in 2019. However, because of COVID, it was estimated that persons may be not able to meet their, to service their accounts, their bills, their water bills. So Water Corporation was provided revenue support of up to 4.3 million to cover shortfalls in revenue. However, Water Corporation's budget, their revenue was never going to be sufficient to meet their expenditure. Thus, if government compensated them to their full revenue that they had expected prior to COVID, they still would not be able to meet all of their expenditure needs. So this is what is driving the unfunded deficit. They have significant expenditure arrears of 10.7 million. I believe this number is now a bit over 11 million because the recent month's electricity is obviously going to be added to that total. The revenue expenditure arrears primarily relate to large sums owed to Anglic related to water production. 10.45 million is owed to Anglic. There's another 254,000 owed to a professional services firm. WCA's continued annual budget deficits are driving these expenditure arrears, particularly in relation to their utility payments. Now, on a point on their financial sustainability, similar to the ASPR, WCA makes a comment on its financial sustainability that the entity has been financially challenged since its inception. It is proposed that only an upward revision of the water rates will allow WCA to service its obligations and generate reserves for future investments. In May of this year, the government would have remitted some 4-point-something million dollars, it's U.S. 1.65 million dollars in money that the Water Corporation owed to government. This sum was related to an advance of the Water Corporation to cover payments to a former contractor. WCA does have one loan with Acedco, which relate to the purchase of a storage tank, 573,000 of which remains to be paid, and 143 of that is paid this year. The Angula Development Board. The ADB has two lines of credit with 5.6 million EC dollars worth of payments are due. We have right here a table showing the arrears. ADB, as you may know, is an institution which, a lending institution, so they do have different types of loans divided by sector, and then there is a breakdown related to their arrears. Public Service Pension. Now, the Public Service Pension Fund covers most of the statutory bodies and the general, the central government. There's two funds, there's the Public Service Pension Fund and the Police Pension Fund. Now, the Police Pension Fund is actually unfunded. So there was an actuarial review conducted at the Pension Fund. Now, the actuarial reviews determine the pension liabilities due to members on a triennial basis. The actuary would look at the current membership, the current pensioners, the deferred pensioners, start dates, contribution rates, dates of births and salaries to determine future actuarial liabilities of the plans. Now, for the pension, for the Police Pension Fund, the total pension liabilities were 38.7 million dollars. Because it's an unfunded plan, all of those liabilities are unfunded. It's 100% unfunded. It's currently covered out of the consolidated fund because of this. Now, the 2019 report recommended to increase the contribution rate by police officers to 5% in 2020 and 6% in 2021, as well as for the government to restore the operation of the fund on a funded basis. Now, in terms of the public sector, Public Service Pension Fund, an actuarial review was conducted in 2016. There's one ongoing right now. So that 2016 review would have determined that the liability of the fund was 266 million dollars, of which 224 million is unfunded, which means it's 84% unfunded. Because of this, the actuarial recommendation was to increase the contribution rate from 2 to 8% from January 2018. The current rate is 6%. Three, three for employer, three for the government, three for the employee. So the recommendation is to increase it from 6 to 8, which I assume will be 4, 4, from January 2018. This was not done in 19. That was also not done. And as well as to postpone the retirement age from 60 years, 60 years of age. Now, in terms of expenditure and revenue arrears, the bulk of the arrears of the Public Service Pension Fund relate to transactions with the government. The pension fund owes the government some 400,000 due to gratuities and pensions that government paid on the pension fund's behalf. However, the government owes the pension fund some 2.8 million dollars due to pension contributions for the difference in salaries after the salaries were reduced. Angola Social Security Fund. Now, the Angola Social Security Board does not contribute to the Public Service Pension Fund. They have their own staff pension fund. The actuarial review in 2019 found that total pension liabilities were 14.4 million dollars, of which 9.6 million was unfunded. That means 66.6% was unfunded, unfunded. Now, the contribution rate is different from the others. It's not match, equally matched. For the staff pension fund, for the social security, the contribution rate is 9%, with 6% contributed from the Social Security Board and 3% from staff. For the fund, the Social Security Fund as we know it, an actuarial review was conducted in 2016. Oh, I should have mentioned at the start of my presentation, these materials would be available on the government website. So for the fund now, the actuarial review was conducted in 2016. The benefit liability in the long-term branch. Now, the long-term branch does not speak to the sickness, the maternity benefit. It speaks to the age benefit, the survivor's benefit. So the liability in the long-term branch was determined to be 853 million dollars, of which 529.5 million is unfunded. That means it's 62% unfunded. The actuararial recommendation was, there was no recommendation to increase the contribution rate of 10%. This rate was in place since the system's inception. However, the analysis does note that the pace of the actuarial development for the rest of this decade might not be optimal, and the period of equilibrium in the long-term branch has significantly decreased. Now, expenditure arrears for the Social Security Board relate mainly to grant payments and pension payments due to persons no longer living in Angola. There are some contractual obligations. They relate mainly to their ICT software and services agreements. It's 5.15 million for the period 2020 to 2025. Just to note, the Social Security National Pension Scheme is funded on a pay-as-you-go basis. You may be aware that there's a provision within the Social Security Act which speaks to advances being made out of the consolidated fund where there are shortfalls in the reserves of the Social Security. However, the Act also states that the rates of contribution, section 16 and section 18 of the Act states that the rates of contribution shall be in accordance with the actuarial recommendations. So that shows that the future generations of stakeholders shall be responsible for the sustainability of the scheme. There's another actuarial review ongoing, so there may be some recommendations coming from that review, as this review was from 2016. Angola National Trusts and Public Utilities Commissions. There were not significant liabilities related to these bodies. For National Trust of Angola, they had no contractual arrangements, no pension schemes, no gratuities. They had no expenditure arrears. Their sole revenue arrears related to a former tenant of Fort Hill, a sum of which is 147,000 dollars is owing, which is, has been owing for a period of greater than a year. Now, for the Public Utilities Commission, we would not expect the statutory body to produce unfunded deficits. This is due to the mechanism by which they're able to generate revenue to cover their expenditure. Now, under the Act, it's prescribed that they will set an industry levy for a given financial year equal to the net estimated expenditure for the commission for that financial year with adjustments. Now, the adjustments is if they had a surplus in the previous year, they'll adjust it downward. And if they had a deficit in the previous year, they'll adjust it upwards to cover that. As such, it's not likely that in any given fiscal year that the PUC will have an unfunded deficit. The PUC has reported no expenditure arrears. There are no revenue arrears. There is some contractual obligations relating to the executive director's contract, and there's gratuity due under that contract of 63.7 thousand dollars for the three-year period. There also, the PUC has office space. The lease would have expired in October 2019. They do intend to enter into a contract effective October 2019 for a five-year period, and the payments related to this lease would be 268.9 thousand dollars. And finally, we just have a summary of the contingent liabilities of the statutory bodies. So in terms of contractual obligations, we've got 73 million dollars for the period 2020 to 2029. In terms of expenditure arrears, we have a sum of 22 million dollars. In terms of unfunded deficits for 2020 to 2025, we have 14 million dollars. In terms of unfunded liabilities related to the pension schemes, there's 802 million dollars, but that's in the long term. Questions?
I'm not going to ask a question. I'm going to point out that P6478 is parked right in the only way to get out of the schoolyard. P6478 is a dark gray-colored Toyota Vitz, and right next to it is PB82. If either one of them moves, I can get out, please.
Thank you very much, Marissa. We'll take questions at the end of the presentations. Thank you, Mark.
I want to thank Marissa Harding-Hodge and Von Lee Harris for those riveting presentations. So June 30th. You know, we had just stayed up all night. We'd won the election. You know, I was on the, you know, basketball court in Island Harbour, pretending I could dance. And, you know, governor called after the election this night and said he wanted to see me at 9:00 in the morning. You know, so I was still three-quarters asleep when I showed up. He said, "We're going to sway you in as premier" because, you know, the APM has won the election. And then he pulled out this document, which he gave me, and this is the actual one. This is the memorandum of understanding between the Government of the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland, acting through the Foreign and Commonwealth Office, FCO, and the Government of Angola, together called the participants, Angola COVID-19 Emergency Financial Aid Program. And this was a memorandum of understanding there on June 11th, and also signed by the Director for the FCO on June 12th of 2020. That's two weeks before the election. And also, when Von Lee, the Counting General, was presenting, he gave you the cash position. So that's a daily reminder of where we stand that he sends out. But this was given to me along with this document by the Governor, His Excellency Tim Foy. And on the bottom of that sheet, it had negative 22 million. And on that, it basically had, this is your overdraft from NCBA. This is your overdraft from the East Caribbean Central Bank. This is the CRIF Fund. This is the reserves, which you saw is less than half a million dollars, which usually is supposed to be a 25% of your expenditure, which would be about 35 million dollars. And so you come awake real quickly when you see those numbers. And the next statement is that in less than three weeks, if you can't meet your debt obligations, the country is bankrupt, and the British government will have to come in and take over because that would cause a constitutional crisis if you can't meet your debt obligations, if your country is bankrupt, and Britain has responsibility for your contingent liabilities. I just say this because I want you to understand the stark reality of coming into government and where you were told beforehand that we were in a blessed place, and you had 24/7 water and all these, and our surplus. And then COVID-19 came, and the pandemic, and of course, everything changed. So the reason why I wanted Marissa to go first is because you then faced with this MOU that has 16 different provisions in it, which you had to meet, and most of them had to be done by June 30th. And so remember, we got elected on June 29th, and the next day is June 30th. And you're told that you have to meet these obligations or else, you know, the British will come in and take over. Because unless you adopt this document already signed, and that now you are bound to, you have until July 10th to make that decision of whether you'll accept this and continue on or, you know, basically. And so that was the reality that we were faced with. And so we then were able to talk with Baroness Sugg, who is the Minister for the Overseas Territories, and was able to get some reprieve. And I must say that His Excellency Governor Tim Foy was very helpful in getting us an audience. We were able to get some of these parameters moved, and also we were able to get the dates, you know, moved down. But some of the things in here were things that we should have been doing all along as a government and as, you know, as public servants. We should have been, these statutory bodies, as Marissa presented, you can see the contingent liabilities that they are. And, you know, the British, four of the provisions in here had to do with statutory bodies. We had to make sure that we could get their budgets. We had to make sure that we could get the, some way that they would deal with the arrears. And we had to figure out, you know, how we could get financials on them and proceeding toward getting audited financials. And then this had to be published. So these are things that we met, we came in with this MOU. And so I don't want to go into it much more than that. I know there'll be probably questions after. I want to talk a little bit about the Ministry of Health and the Ministry of Finance, which, you know, I am tasked with. And if ever there was a need to balance health and the economy, this is that time because COVID-19 basically is, it's a health crisis. But now, as it has progressed, it's become an economic crisis because shutting down our tourism industry, it requires that our economy is now stagnant, and we have to open that up. And so sometimes, you know, as Elder Clive would say, you know, God puts you in the right place for a time as this. Right, Elder Smith? Amen. Thank you. COVID-19 showed us how fragile our economy that is so heavily based on tourism is. From this financial aid part of the MOU has helped, you know, the Health Authority to bolster up itself, to cater for, you know, sick persons if, you know, COVID-19 had become more rampant in the community. Some of the monies from the 60 million pounds that was humanitarian aid from Hurricane Irma helped to restore the hospital, helped to build a lab or storage area, emergency medical services area, morgue at the hospital so that it can cut down the cost of having to move persons to the funeral home before they were seen by the pathologist, those that needed to have autopsies. The Valley Medical Complex, the Western Health Centre in South Hill. And then monies from the United Kingdom Government are helping to build an isolation unit. But some of the costs that have been incurred with COVID-19, such as having to pay the unemployment, that some of the policies that we wanted, that we campaigned on, such as providing healthcare for those who are 70 and older, that has to be put on hold because the monies that could have been used for that, we are using that money to help people barely survive because 1,000 EC dollars is not enough for one person, much less some families have to survive on that. So we had to hold back on that policy. We also wanted to cover our revolutionary heroes, provide them a pension so that they don't have to worry about whether they can feed themselves or buy medication. You saw that the Health Authority gets a subvention. That subvention helps to keep the hospital open, keep the staff employed, provide care. Because without that, the fees that are being charged right now, you know, certainly are not enough for us. You see this document right here? Anything that, you know, that we give away that comes out of the 100 million dollars? So if we give a duty-free concession, that dollar-for-dollar is not given to us when we claim it because it's basically, they're saying, if you can give away money, then why are you taking it from the British taxpayer? So these are hard decisions, as I said, that have to be made, that continue to be made. And I think that's why you elected us because, you know, we will make the tough decisions that are necessary to get Angola on the right foot and have us go in the right direction. Some of the other requirements is that we have to come up with a medium-term economic and fiscal plan that shows that we can afford government. And you know how tough that is in these times when there's no tourism? So you can't collect accommodation tax. You can't collect all these different fees which help to keep the government going. And so they want us to sell Anglic, which we campaigned that we wouldn't. And suddenly, we'll hold a line on that, that the shares held by the government in Anglic are not for sale. Thank you very much. You know, we have the N B A and C C B former employees pensions that need to be paid. Again, because of the cash position that we're in, this is something that we wanted to pay, which we will have to, and we want to make sure we get that done. But this situation we are in economically does not allow us to just proceed to do that. We wanted to build fish processing plant, you know, we wanted to set different policies. So decisions may have consequences. That is the plan. And I let, you know, Minister Hughes and Parliamentary Secretary Quincya Gomes-Marie, who is tasked with tourism, talk about that. But goods and services tax, this is something that, you know, the United Kingdom government has put a lot of money into developing that and into setting it up. And they want to see that we put in this to make sure that we can fill the gap that occurs between the revenue that we can make and our expenditures. And so this is something that, you know, we campaigned against because we do not think that goods and service tax will provide the the revenue that they projected will. But again, this is something that we have to, you know, listen to and consider because there is a big gap there that we have to make sure that we can fill. And we can't expect the British taxpayers to constantly bail us out. Certainly, they owe us an obligation, you know? And maybe we have to talk about reparations at some point. But I think right now, we have to make sure that we can get through. And so I'm responsible as the Minister of Finance for NCBA, which is a bridge bank which needs to be converted to a regular commercial bank by April of 2021. So that's something we have to look into. How are we going to be able to, to get the bank onto that footing? I'm responsible for Social Security, the Anguilla Development Board. One of the things we may have to consider for the Anguilla Development Board, given its contingent liability, is basically shutting it down and then giving government guaranteed loans to those, say, students who need to study, those who want to start small businesses, those who want to build homes. These are things that we have to consider because, as I said in the beginning, we're going to make decisions that help and improve the lives of the people of Anguilla. And as long as we can do that, that's what we plan to do. And so we come up with different plans and ideas and, and that we can do to help to increase growth in the economy. That is going to require that we have to make sure that we have areas of getting foreign direct investment. And I know that has become a hot button topic, you know, here in Anguilla. But we have always survived on tourism and foreign direct investment. And the government raises revenue with taxes. We want to make sure that we can have tax reform that is fear to the people of Anguilla and that we have growth in the economy. So that is my presentation. That's where we're at. We certainly going to have to ask the British for more help in 2021 because there is going to be a financing gap between what we need to spend and what we can raise. And we will, the plan is, Ling Ting, we have to open.
Doc.
Talk to me.
When you all got elected, right? You got elected for five years, am I wrong?
Five years, yes.
Don't think about a next term when you get elected for five years. Make the hard decisions in the first five. If you do good enough, they'll put you back. Stop thinking about the next election. Think about this one that they put you in. So do everything in this five that you think you're going to be tough. A lot of people don't like what you do, but only think about five. The next five will come if you do what is right for the people. But if you started thinking about, if I do this, you're going to offend this, you will never get there. Make tough decisions for the people of this country, please.
I agree with you. Thank you very much. That is the mindset. Thank you. Thank you for listening. You'll have a chance to ask more questions after.
Moving right on, we bring to the podium Minister of Home Affairs, Honorable Ken Ataj, to make his presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming out here this evening. In the interest of time, I will confine my brief presentation to labour-related matters. Of course, in the question and answer, you can ask me about any of the other areas under my remit. First, I would like to reassure our workforce, particularly those in the hospitality sector, that the Ministry and Department of Labour are very closely monitoring the prevailing conditions in the labour market, particularly with regards to the hospitality sector. I continue to give careful scrutiny and consideration to each and every work permit that crosses my desk. And I can assure you that we will continue to ensure that the interests of Angulians are maintained in this labour market. I would like to touch for a few minutes on the understudy programme. Part of every work permit carries an understudy component. That means that we grant an expatriate worker the opportunity to come to Anguilla to fill a niche and need that is perceived not to be present in Anguilla. So we grant them a work permit under the condition that they come here and they train an Angulian with the necessary skills, knowledge, abilities, and whatever else is necessary to fulfil that position in the shortest possible time. It is our experience so far that this is being abused, particularly in the hospitality sector. And I'm being very clear and candid tonight. We are very happy to welcome our investors to our country. We thank you for your investments and we are happy to provide the necessary incentives and concessions to enable you to make handsome returns on your investments. But at the end of the day, the development of our people will always be centre stage of governments' plans and programmes. And this is why we'll be paying particular attention to the understudy programme moving forward. And I can assure you that we'll be making the necessary policy and legislative changes to ensure that we give this provision teeth, particularly particularly in this market we are in today, when so many of our Angulian workers are on the breadline. We have to ensure that we scale up our workers to make them, give them the ability to take up these positions when they become available. That is my brief contribution tonight because I have a number of my colleagues also have to make presentations, so feel free to ask many questions. Thank you.
Thank you much, Mr. Hodge. Next up, we have the Minister of Social Development, it's Diane Kentish-Radgers.
Good night, everyone. Can you hear me? So for the past 10 weeks, or two and a half months, the Government of Anguilla, and in particular, the Ministry of Education and Social Development, has been undertaking a number of reviews and assessments of various departments and statutory bodies to determine the way forward. Even though it may seem like a long time, it has been a relatively short period and our reviews are still ongoing. We have had to prioritise the most pressing issues: coronavirus, funding issues, deadlines related to the MOU provisions, and meeting with various stakeholders across the departments. So the MOU provisions that Marissa, Miss Harding-Hodge, would have referred to and the Honourable Premier would have referred to, would have included a number of deadlines by which the ministry would have had to comply with in order to receive the grant of the funds. In relation to the statutory bodies, there were four provisions that the UK required to be submitted, one of which, which you saw Miss Harding-Hodge present on, included the contingent liabilities of the statutory bodies. And this required each statutory body to produce a specific plan to improve the financial sustainability and address both revenue and expenditure areas, and a clearly articulated plan to reduce these over the next 12 months. Miss Harding-Hodge would have referred to the Ministry, from the Ministry of Finance, would have referred to the Angula Community College, which is the body under the administration of the Ministry of Education. The Angula Community College receives a subvention of, in excess of 3 million EC dollars per annum, which is a significant portion of their revenue, what they get in. This figure presented, the figures presented tonight indicate that there will have to be a very serious contemplation of the sustainability of this institution in the current circumstances. The model as it currently stands clearly needs significant adjustments, and we are currently in the process of reviewing alternative models. The Ministry of Education would also have been working on COVID protocols for the reopening of the schools, and we are currently developing a comprehensive document for use across the education sector. While the fall in revenue would have necessitated cuts across all government departments, we have also had to increase spending to maintain the safety of our students, teachers, support staff, and community. This would have been, this would account for additional custodians for the schools, the need for substitute teachers, the maintenance costs for the schools, additional cleaning and sanitation supplies, and the industrial cleaning of the schools. In relation to the Angula programmes, the Government of Anguilla would have signed a MOU with the UK government for the grant of 60 million pounds for the development of infrastructure on the island. A number of educational projects were identified. A number of the primary schools, currently, we have the Aurelia Kelly Primary School, the Adrian T Hazel Primary School, the Valley Primary School, and the Morris Van de Poel Primary School, under construction, along with the Albina Lake Hodge Comprehensive School. So these projects would have been fit within a limited budget, and we have faced the project, the problem of an oversubscription of the 60 million pounds. That means that the government has placed too many projects within the funding granted. It has therefore placed a question on whether or not there will be sufficient funds to complete these projects. Originally, for the education sector, especially for the Albina Lake Hodge Comprehensive School, the project would have envisioned having both Campus A and Campus B being housed in the same facility for ease of delivering the service of education to all students in the high school sector at the quarter site. However, this, we have received a reduction because of an overspend from the grant of 32 million US dollars to 24 million US dollars. As a result, we've had to exclude certain items from the completion of the ALHCS programme. What the Government of Anguilla is currently doing is finding the requisite funding to be able to complete these programmes, which we cannot guarantee that we will get. But that does not mean we're not going to work hard to find it. But in the alternative, we are looking at repurposing some of the rooms in relation to the programme so that certain items that would have been excluded from the programme, like the science lab, we can find another way to fit that within the current programme. In relation to sports development, we have some good news. We have been able to meet in relation to a number of facilities on Ireland in relation to basketball. We've met with local engineers and we're currently working on how we can develop these sporting facilities for our young people. We have been able to secure land in Long Pond for the development of a baseball field, which which we hope will continue to increase the sporting diversity on the island. It will give us the chance to invite overseas teams to play in this particular sporting area, and it will give us the chance to develop a sport, a baseball and softball academy. We are also looking we are also looking to get international accreditation for the Jaunty Memorial Race. And once we are able to do so, and it is recognised as an international event, we'll be able to market it at an international level, to be able to get more international athletes on the calendar coming into Anguilla. That's all a part of it. In relation to gender affairs, we are currently in the process of the infancy stages of our men's committee. We have already started meetings in relation to the men's committee, and we're taking a holistic approach to moulding our young men and making them comfortable in other settings, building their skills and their confidence. The Ministry of Social Development is also spearheading in partnership with the Ministry of Health, the COVID-19 Mental Health and Wellness Programme, which addresses the mental need, the mental health needs of our population. As it relates to legislation, the ministry is just about to finish our decriminalisation policy, which will then go to the House of Assembly with our which will then go to the House of Assembly with our decriminalization legislation. And in relation to legalization, because I know that this is a hot-button topic, and I felt it necessary to provide some clarification, I would have given an interview on Radio Anguilla in relation to the legalization of marijuana, and... Yeah, you might want to wait. The, the, what I was referring to, in terms of the number of international conventions that now apply to Anguilla by virtue of our status as a British overseas territory, they include the 1961 UN Single Convention on Narcotic Drugs, the 1971 Convention on Psychotraffic Substances, and the 1988 Convention Against Illicit Traffic in Narcotic Drugs, all of which make it illegal to legalize, make it unlawful to legalize the legalized marijuana. And that is a conversation that is above Anguilla because these conventions, we are signatories to them by virtue of our relationship with the United Kingdom government. The United Kingdom government has not legalized marijuana, and if you look at the other British overseas territories, you would have realized that they would not have been able to legalize marijuana, and that is by virtue of these three international conventions. We, we are currently in the process of bringing the Child Justice Bill to the House, which would increase protection for children in the criminal justice system, and it will also provide the scope for diversionary practices for young people, so that, in accordance with something that I would have said on the Campell Trail, the first meeting that a young person has is not with the criminal court system, but rather with the social justice system. We are also currently in the process of reviewing the national grooming policy as it relates to these schools. And we are also going to be meeting with the students who would have been going off to school, students who would have had hopes of going off to school, students who would have been in school at this particular point in time, in order to fashion a relationship with them, to see how we can assist them at this time. So that is my update on the goings of the Ministry of Education and Social Development, and you can ask us questions after. Thank you.
Thank you, the Honorable Minister. Next up to the podium, we have our Minister for Maikou, the Honorable Hayden Hughes.
Good evening, everyone. Before, before I say anything, I would just like you to give a round of applause to Ms. M. Lovina Harding-Hodge, Von Lee Harris, Controller of Inland Revenue, Mr. Kiel Connor. And I must say that Kiel has been a tremendous resource, not only, not only for, I'm sure, for the Minister of Finance, but also for myself. I can always call on him for guidance and advice. And as, as young as he may be, he has a wealth of knowledge, and he's enthusiastic, and I really appreciate, appreciate him. Thank you, Kiel. I would also like to really thank the team at the Ministry of Infrastructure, Maikou, and Tourism. As you know, we have consolidated under one ministry with one permanent secretary, and Mr. Karim Hodge, the permanent secretary. I consider him my permanent secretary, and I'm very happy and pleased with what he is offering, not only to me, but to the government of Anguilla. He's been doing a tremendous job. And it always gives pleasure to be standing up here on a podium and saying to the public that we have tremendous support from the Anguilla Public Service and those persons that are tasked with working directly with us. So in the Ministry of Tourism and Maikou, Mr. Karim Hodge, Ms. Christine Irish, and Allin Fiona Wilkinson, we communicate on a daily basis, and I could not do anything without them. So if they're listening, I just want to say to you, thank you very much for the support that you've been giving me, and by extension, the government and the people of Anguilla. As you know, and as you have seen before, we have inherited a very difficult situation. But one thing I know that is sure, we have stopped the bleeding. And I, I, I am very happy and proud to be a part of this team. You know, I, as you know, I served in government before. And even though I served in government before, and at that time, I was actually the youngest Member of Parliament. How times have changed quickly. But one of the things that I really enjoy is that we can hang out together, we can joke with each other, we do things together outside of the office. And I have never seen that before in administration, and that is something that I must give some people the round of applause. And I want to say, the Honorable Queen Segums Marie, the Honorable Diane Kentish Rogers, the Honorable Kyle Hodge, the old folks like Merrick Richardson, Honorable Merrick Richardson, the Honorable Premier, and the Honorable Kennedy Hodge. You know, they have their own old folks section. But we, we hang out together, and we do the, we do the late-night spots. I just, I just want to place that on record. As you know, I have a little bit of experience in tourism, and the Honorable Ministers of Labor have spoken about labor and the challenges of labor. And we came into office with a COVID crisis, and a lot of the hotels and hospitality products have closed down. And just today, we learned of a number of persons that have lost their jobs at Capjuluka, and I want the general public in Anguilla to know that we in the government of Anguilla was not provided in a list of names prior to these. And there is no requirement for any establishment to provide in a list of names. And as I look around the crowd, I see persons who have been followed at this time. But you can rest assured that in this administration, we put Anguilla first, and we put Anguillians first. So in us, you will have a government, once things normalize in the new normal, because there will be a new normal, you will come first. And there is no way we as an administration, we'd be putting anybody ahead of us and ahead of all people when we have suitably qualified persons to do those jobs. So I just want to place that on record, and I'm sure the Ministers of Labor have no issue with me stating that fact. So you have seen a lot of the things that have been presented by the technical folks in the Ministry of Finance. I am the minister responsible for tourism, and the ministry, and the Ministry responsible for tourism, we have inherited a number of liabilities, and most, most of those liabilities that you have seen before are related to contractual obligations. The Anguilla Tourist Board survives completely on subventions, and we won't go too much into those contractual obligations. But I can say that the Anguilla Tourist Board that is in place right now is working diligently to ensure that those liabilities are reduced. And I want to list them out, name them out. And from the Anguilla Tourist Board, Mr. Kenroy Hubbard, Ms. Malaysia McUniles, Mr. Thiago Sarmiento, Ms. Lucy Mendez, Ms. Condon Proctor, Ms. Danitza Musington, Ms. Stacy Leibert. So a lot of people ask the question, why is it a general manager from a major hotel is on the Anguilla Tourist Board? So I want to answer that question. And that question is because the Anguilla Tourist Board, when it was envisioned in 1994, it was supposed to be a conduit between the public and the private sector. It was supposed to ensure that there was a symbiotic and a good working relationship between the public and the private sector. But over the past five years, that relationship was breached. That relationship was very acrimonious. And it is important that that relationship is fostered because it is necessary that the private sector and government work together to deliver on the promise of growth for the people of Anguilla. So when a general manager for a major hotel is selected to the board, it isn't because of any particular affinity to that person. It is because what we seek to do is to ensure that the tide that float all boats rise together. And this is why that happened. If it wasn't him, it would have been somebody, and it definitely couldn't be James Lake. So as the Anguilla Tourist Board continued to reduce its expenditure and cut costs and prepare for the new COVID era. And I won't talk very much about tourism because I, we have a capable and able parliamentary secretary responsible for tourism in the Honorable Queen Segums Marie, and she knows that a lot of the time that we spend, we spend time to see how, along with the Ministry of Health, and, and those in the Ministry of Health have been spending a tremendous amount of time working on the protocols in which we can reopen. And when we say reopen, we don't mean a carte blanche opening where you book a flight, and jump on a flight, and just come to Anguilla, jump in a taxi, and fly down to the rest, to the hotel. But we understand and appreciate this new COVID era that we find ourselves in. So it is how we can marry economic opportunities, economic advancement, while protecting the health and safety of the people of Anguilla. And that entails that there will be certain protocols that is unprecedented, not only unprecedented around the world, but I think what we are doing here in Anguilla to protect our COVID-free environment is protocols that have never been seen before. And we believe that when we unveil these protocols at the end of this week, that persons will be booking to come to Anguilla because there is no place like this country. There is no place that a COVID environment, that once you are medically cleared, you can walk around and don't have any fear of being infected by the dreaded COVID-19 disease. So we'll unveil all of that information because we have a goal of opening, and I say that with a caveat, opening this country on November 1st, 2020. So for those hospitality workers who've been asking the question, we will be doing everything we can to ensure that you get back to work and you can earn a meaningful living. Because as the Premier said, 1,000 EC dollars really can go far. It helps, but it really can't go very far. As, as you saw from the slides, I have taken over some of the more problematic portfolios. But I am not alone, and I have a capable team that is working with me. On the Anguilla ANC Post Authority, I think it was Ms. Von Lee who said that before, previous to COVID, there was no need for a subvention. But now there's a need for a subvention. But even though there's a need for a subvention, there are many areas in which we can cut those liabilities, and we've been working diligently with the new Board of ASPR that includes Kara Connor, Carl Woodley, Kendall Richardson from the Ministry, Jason Lloyd, Laura Boot, Brent Warner, Leon Lake, Carl, Avery Thomas, Elidad Jacobs, Warren Buddle. And I say it because I want you to know that this administration is very transparent, and we have nothing to hide because government's business is the people's business. And so we've been working very diligently to reduce those contingent liabilities, and we've been putting a lot of pressure on the board to ensure that those contingent liabilities are reduced. As it relates to water, all I would say about water is that it's essential. But, and, and the Water Authority have some really good staff. I mean, every single day, you see them patching pipes, patching leaks across this island. And soon after coming to office, the CEO, Mr. Ali Anthony, great guy, he presented me with the outlook of water. And at that point, I called the Premier, and I said, "Premier, is this a good time for me to resign?" And the Premier said, "No, you can't resign. You have to tackle water." But when that outlook came to me, I honestly wanted to resign because I never imagined water could be flooded with so many problems. We have an entity that has 19 million dollars in assets, 28 million dollars in liabilities, and over 48 million dollars in contractual obligations, and a, and a need for 55 million dollars in new capital investment. So what does that mean? Who wants to buy water? A dollar going once, going twice? I see no takers. So that is where we are with water, and not even Max could fix water. But we have an overall vision for water where we can consolidate public utilities, perhaps look at the possibility of consolidating water and electricity as one entity. Because when it is that we have to run water and redo the infrastructure across this island at the tune of 55 million dollars, then it is that we can look at putting our electricity underground across the island as well. So there's, there's still, even in the dark days, there's still hope. There's still hope for water. And so we have put together a board that comprised of Chairman Kennedy Hodge. Where is he? As soon as you hear about water, he slipped through the back door. Kennedy Hodge is the chairman, and we have put a lot of responsibility on himself, Geraldine James, Glenn Ford Richardson, Calla Gomes, Gleniva Hodge, Theresa Leibert. We have put a lot of responsibility on them, and they've been working even on weekends, eight and nine hours. You know, a lot of people, when I say this without reservation, they always want to go on a board because they think that it's really a smooth sailing. But there's a lot of responsibility when you are placed on a board and you have a fiduciary responsibility that has no statute of limitation. And what we seek to do is to hold boards accountable for their actions, not only this board, but boards on a whole. Whether they go back to 1976 or 2016, we need to hold boards accountable because they, as you can see from the slides, can create a burden to the taxpayers of Anguilla. And so I believe, after we have done the work that we seek to do, I don't think there'll be 50,000 people living in Anguilla and overseas wanting to clamor to be on, on, on any of these boards. So I don't want to prolong it any longer. But what I'll say is that there's a lot of work that is being done, including the much-needed constitutional reform. We have seen a number of constitutional anomalies, and that is why today you have the Deputy Governor sitting as the Deputy Speaker. That's a constitutional anomaly that needs to be addressed. We have to address campaign finance reform. And I want to say this with all certainty and clarity, that this administration was elected without a penny being contributed by any hotelier in Anguilla. And for that, and, and I want to say this, I didn't ask the Premier permission to say this, but I want to say this, if any of you want to contribute to our outstanding campaign debt, you're free to do so. Just see the Premier after this and write a check. I'll contribute what you can towards our SM campaign debt. I think he'll gladly accept it. So we have been also working on a number of initiatives. We have an opportunity, and I won't, I don't want to be presumptuous, but we have an opportunity that FIFA, for the World Cup, upcoming World Cup... that FIFA for the World Cup, upcoming World Cup that we may have, we may be able to host a couple of the matches in Angola. We're working diligently to make that happen. Hopefully it can come true for us. As you know, the customs in Senegro, the hours were previously from eight thirty to noon and from one to four. Been successful in expanding and extending the hours from eight in the morning all the way down to six P M. So that will give, including our public service, the ability to go and clear the items after four in the afternoons. We are working, as I said before, on our reopening program. And I just want to say, and I'm not going to promise this promise, but I can promise this, that in order to get something finished, you have to start somewhere. And we have been able to get through the Executive Council and be going to tender the surveying for the development of the Carter Ray Boulevard, which is commonly called the Valley Main Road. So that is going to tender very soon for the surveying. It is financed and soon thereafter, we'll be doing the designs and the engineering for the Valley Main Road. And I won't say it won't, it will be done unless a big cheque is cut by Max. But we have all intentions to ensure that it's done. And Mr. Tim Foy, who is now my brother, has given his commitment to see it through. So I'm very excited about that going forward. As you also know, that there's a need for the Clayton J Lloyd International Airport, that the strip must be resurfaced. And that is something that we are looking at, we are working diligently on. It is something that has to be done. And if we can twin the resurfacing of the Clayton J Lloyd International Airport along with the resurfacing of the Carter Ray Boulevard, I won't want to use the adjectives that have been used for that road over the years, but you know what it is. If we can twin that, that'd be a great opportunity for us so you won't have to mobilize an asphalt plant. So as I said, I won't make any promises, but keep it in the back of your mind. It is something that we are working diligently on. The Blowing Point Ferry Terminal, I think about five or six weeks ago, we brought together all of the stakeholders, ground transportation, boat operators, people who work around the port to sit down with the designers and come up with something that is fit for purpose. And they're working diligently and hopefully that'll be going to tender next month, October. And the successful contractor have a deadline of two thousand and twenty-two to have the Blowing Point Ferry Terminal open and ready for business. I've also received a priority list on the state of the dot roads in Angola. I did not imagine that Angola had so many dot roads. And I apologize if you're living on a dot road. But that is something that we can't promise in a remedial action at this time because of the financial constraints. But you can rest assured that we're looking at that along with a streetlight policy. Because we want to use as much as possible solar streetlights and we want to transform our streetlight capacity from being on the grid to renewable energy lights. As as you also know, that there's a number of major properties on Angola for sale. And we're working with prospective buyers on those. And we will be able to update you as time moves on on that. There's also some television opportunities to be able to showcase Angola around the world. We're also working with those folks on that. And last but not least, for many years, we've been hearing the noise about tint. And so we have been able to pass through Executive Council and will be going to Parliament in the next sitting of Parliament amendments to the Road Traffic Vehicle Act to change tint so that we will, all of the noise relating to tint and the application of tint will be finally silenced. And we'll also be able to go to the House to give teeth to the Premier and other members of government in terms of, and this is something that I didn't know. And now you know, that those number plates, like Myku and Premier and all of those, those fall under an act. And I won't say which one of those at the table is being shown for the wrong, around the island with a number plate that says P R E M I E R and needs to go to the House to amend the act to ensure that he is not arrested. So I won't say who it is. But I just want to thank everybody for coming out and listening to my long diatribe. And I just want to extend my appreciation to the team that I find myself so great, lucky to be part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Next up, we have the Honourable Minister for Economic Development, Investment, Commerce, Information Technology and Natural Resources, the Honourable Kyle Hodge.
Good evening to everyone and thank you for coming out tonight. My ministry is a new ministry. It comprises of the Ministry of Economic Development, Investment, Commerce, Information Technology and Natural Resources. This ministry was formed after the twenty twenty general elections. So for the first time in, for the Government of Angola, we now have five ministries. The composition of this new ministry, this ministry consists of four units and three departments. And it oversees the work of three statutory bodies. The first unit, the Economic Planning Unit, this unit coordinates, directs and monitors economic programs of the Government of Angola. The second unit, the Projects Unit, this unit coordinates, directs and monitors the public sector investment program of the Government of Angola. This unit focuses on capital projects. The third unit, which is the Commerce Unit, this unit promotes, facilitates, monitors and regulates commerce and business development to achieve and maintain governments' economic growth targets. This unit deals with business licenses. And the fourth unit, the Trade and Investment Unit, this unit facilitates and monitors private sector investment, business development, diversification and expansion of production by domestic and external firms to achieve and maintain governments' economic growth targets. So like I said earlier, there are three departments as well. Those departments, the first department, Department of Information Technology and E-Government Services, which is DITES. And you can give them a round of applause for the awesome work they are doing here tonight, streaming. The second unit, second department is the Angola Statistics Department. The third department is the Department of Natural Resources. And this department is a merger of the Fisheries and Marine Resources, the Agriculture Department and the Department of Environment. The three statutory bodies that also falls under this ministry, the Angola National Trust, Select Angola Agency and the Special Economic Zone Authority. So what we do in this ministry, our current work programs, the development of a strategic plan for the ministry for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five has been worked on since we got to office. Our vision, a thriving economy for a sustainable future. Our mission, to enable a resilient and viable economy through prudent resource management, efficient service delivery and the implementation of data-driven palaces that integrate socio-environmental considerations while fostering investment, entrepreneurship, innovation and business development. So within our ministry, the Economic Planning Unit is tasked with the completion of the MTF, the Medium-Term Economic Fiscal Plan. This plan will outline Government of Angola's strategy for economic growth and financial management. It is what governs the relationship between the Government of Angola and the United Kingdom Government in relation to United Kingdom Government support. On the commerce side, we are in the process of developing a new business license regime. We are in the process also of developing a new manufacturing and production policy as well as an agricultural policy. One hundred and forty-six new business licenses have been approved for the year up to date. Between March twentieth, twenty twenty to this current date, eighty-eight new business licenses have been approved. And that is just a testament of the entrepreneurial spirit in Angola. During a pandemic, during such a crisis like this, we have brave people who are still pushing forward and creating new business opportunities. In the Trade and Investment Unit, we are negotiating and reviewing several MOUs. Of those MOUs are the St. James School of Medicine, the Caribbean Beacon. And there are several other medical schools that we are entertaining at this point in time. There's also the discussion on the Senegro Marina that is a hot button issue right now. That is one of the investments that we are exploring. There's also work on developing a new investment promotion policy to target specific types of investment, foreign direct investment, diaspora direct investment and local investment. I just want to stress at this point that even though there's a moratorium on the issuing of new business licenses, it does not restrict the application of business licenses. What this moratorium does is it allows us to carefully scrutinize the applications. And I want to also state that we are open for foreign direct investment. Moving on to DITES, currently there's work with external entities to improve efficiencies in several departments. Example, the new tax system at I R D, the new land information system at Lands and Surveys and the new visa system at Immigration. We're also seeking to capitalize further on the dot AI domain. In the Natural Resources Department, we have been having several meetings with the Farmers Association and also the Water Corporation in order to address the issue of water. And I can say here tonight that this week, we will meet with the Farmers Association after having a meeting with the Water Corporation a couple of days ago in order to finally come to a better understanding as it relates to what we can do with water in terms of the reduction of the rate and in terms of increasing the ban. Within that department as well, we are beginning to conceptualize the development of offshore fishing in order to capture some licensing fees and in order to capture some export fees as it relates to the export of fish. We are also developing a new marine park, new environmental legislation. We're reviewing land distribution and tractor services. And we are revitalizing, we are in the process of revitalizing the people's market. In addition, within the Department of the Natural Resources, we are looking to introduce a licensing permit process as it relates to food security, as it relates to promoting our local production, whether it's the eggs, whether it's the tomatoes or the other produce that we can grow locally or whether it's the fish that we can catch in our waters. Once we introduce this permit licensing process in the interim, it's not going to restrict the importation of these products, our produce that we can make or grow here. But what it does is it allows us to capture the data of imports and compare it to what we can produce on the local scene in order to further promote our local, locally made, locally produced, locally caught industries. And with that, I say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Minister. Our next and final presenter, the Honourable Parliamentary Secretary of Economic Development, Information Technology, Natural Resources, Tourism, Miss Quincy Gomes-Marie.
Good evening all. Thank you for being out and staying out for so long. And those who are online, thank you for tuning in and remaining tuned in. I intend to be very short because I know it's been a long night. This evening was an evening for examining the state of Angola's affairs and the state of our nation financially, which impacts how we are socially and environmentally and otherwise. And when we look at this, we must also look at the role played by COVID-19, especially in one of our key industries or our main industry, and that is tourism. The industry is known for its high-touch characteristics. So when you come, you hug, you shake hands, you interact with persons at different destination experiences. The high-touch industry. And it took a significant hit due to our border closures. We are faced with the reality that we cannot remain closed forever. However, we cannot accept risks that we cannot manage. So then it requires a significant balancing effort. Subsequently, we adopted a phased reopening approach. We are currently in phase one. The measures include, but are not limited to the following. One, online pre-authorized entry, test upon arrival, test prior to arrival and test after stay in place. Three, stay in place for ten to fourteen days depending on the country of origin being high, being categorized as high or low risk. An entry fee for one thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for persons under three months. Digital work permits also formed a key part of phase one to facilitate persons wishing to live and work remotely in Angola. This phase was an exciting step towards our reopening. Now, as we look forward to phase two, here are some things that you can also look forward to hearing. I want to pause here and share that these measures have not been approved by Executive Councilers yet. So I will present them as proposed measures and not confirmed measures. Is that clear? I did teach for two years, so. The proposed phase two reopening protocols will include The proposed phase two reopening protocols will include, but not limited to, commencing on November first, online pre-authorized entry, and this may also come with a revision of entry fees. It will require testing prior to arrival, testing upon arrival, and testing at the end of each day, as with phase one. It will include, it is proposed to include, vacation bubbles. This concept is proposed to encourage on-property activities and dining. So how the bubble is supposed to operate is that if you're staying at a hotel, you're staying at Cusinat, you will not leave Cusinat prior to your, prior to exiting quarantine period, but there will be activities available on that property as well as food, restaurants, beach activities and such, but they will be subjected to protocol approval. They will be approved on-property activities that will be proposed. They must be approved by the Ministry of Health. Long-term stays will also form part of phase two, so this will also include the furthering of our digital work, our digital work permit initiative. And each property, similar to phase one, will be required to present protocols outlining, amongst other things, how they will protect their employees, thus reducing the risk of community spread, creation of a COVID-19 response team, and how they will handle a possible case. And every employee will or should receive training prior to commencing work. I want to say at this moment that I understand that there will be persons who are skeptical about the reopening process. Perhaps your first question is, what is the difference between phase one and two? Why are we moving forward to accepting more risks in November first versus now? And the answer is, as it has always been, capacity. By phase two reopening, we will have more persons onboard with the Ministry of Health, which will better position the ministry to carry out their surveillance, testing, and monitoring protocols. Our efforts are not meant to sound like desperate times, call for desperate measures approach. In fact, we believe in exactly the opposite. My brief presentation this evening is merely to inform you of where we are and why we must take the steps that we are taking. We are not moving on or forward without you. In fact, this is a collaborative approach. We need to work together to make our reopening work. As citizens of this nation, we too must ask ourselves, what is our appetite for risks as it relates to COVID-19? But not only that, the question following that question is what will be the fate of our fellow Angulians? Do we continue to accept further redundancies and layoffs, unpaid utility bills, unpaid rent, diminished spending power coupled with a rise in social ills in the name of saying we are COVID-free? These are the questions we had to ask ourselves, and the answer we unilaterally agree to is to find a balance. Between our very competent team in the Ministry of Health, Ministry of Tourism, Angola Tourism Board, Immigration, Customs, ASPA, Angola Hotel and Tourism Association, and other industry partners, we feel confident that we are striking a fair balance between reopening and maintaining public health needs. Empowerment has also played a vital role in our reopening efforts. We have met with and provided training for hospitality workers. We will begin training with ground and air transportation representatives, and we look forward to meeting with restaurateurs in short order. Some of the training included Apaho facilitated training geared specifically to the hospitality industry, and training facilitated by the Ministry of Social Development that included, that was facilitated, sorry, by Dr. Rania Foy Connor, Mrs. Hyacinth Bradley, and Dr. Olufomike Banks Devonish, was focused primarily on mental health and COVID-19 in the hospitality industry. It was originally catered to train twenty persons, but we instead had a showing of over sixty. If anything, this is an indication of the willingness of hospitality workers to get back out to work. There'll be another session on Monday, twenty-first September, at the Teacher's Resort Center, and on Wednesday, twenty-third September. The Wednesday session will be delivered in Spanish to cater to our Spanish-speaking members of the industry. The time will be confirmed, I don't know why I don't have it in my presentation, but in the communication sent out to the industry, the time is in that communication. To close, I would like to assure the public that we are not putting profits before people. Instead, we are doing our best to get as many persons back out to work in the safest way possible. We are all in this together, which means we all have the shared responsibility to balance capacity and accept risks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Parliamentary Secretary. We now open the floor for any questions. And when you're asking your questions, you could please direct them to the individual minister you want to speak to.
Okay.
Thank you, bye.
Well, this has been a long time coming. And if you may permit me, I have about four questions. So I'll start with the last question first, since it was one of the latest things spoken about. I think this would have to go to the Minister of Tourism, Mr. Hayden Hughes. It has been said that the government workers, after ten years, they qualify for pension retirement, retirement funding, which I believe is about seventy percent of their latest salary before retirement. On the other hand, they have been, there has been resilient and loyal hotel workers who have worked just as long and cannot receive funding when they have reached retirement age. My question is, in the spirit of putting Angola, Angula and Angulians first, is there, is this statement true that there is no pension fund for hotel workers? If not, why is that? And what can be done to reverse such, as well as, will any legislature be passed to pay retired hotel workers retroactively?
Thank you for the question. I believe this question would have been a Minister of
Finance, maybe?
Of Labor.
Of Labor.
Of Home Affairs. But I would say this, that pension, we have been looking at it.
You want to answer the question, or you want me just go ahead?
We are, we have had serious discussions as it relates to pension, not only for hospitality workers, but also for construction workers and the like, but we have to educate people on it because it is, pension does not come free. As a member of the Angola Public Service, you pay into a pension fund. Members of the Angola Social Security Board who works at Social Security pay into pension fund. Every entity that receives pension pays into a pension fund, and we are the first administration elected members who are paying into the pension fund. So the hospitality sector, what is envisioned is when it is rolled out, they too will be expected to pay into pension fund. I don't know if you want to.
Yes, just to answer your question, pension funds generally work best when they are contributory. And given what's happening in hospitality sector now with so many workers on the bread line, we in the Labor Ministry are seeing the need to begin to encourage the development of these pension schemes in hospitality sector so that when these kinds of times come, workers have something to draw upon. It is really disheartening for persons to be telling you that they have gone home, sometimes it's nothing but their last paycheck. So this is something that the Ministry of Labor will be encouraging moving forward, that we have to begin to develop these schemes, contributory schemes within hospitality and other sectors of the business community as well.
So my question is, I'm just curious, for those who, you know, because it did not come from their salary as it should, right, retroactively with anything be done for them?
Sorry, I'm not picking up exactly. Stick a little louder.
In terms of those who have already retired, have hit retirement age, I think the retirement age now is from two thousand and four, they went to from sixty to sixty-five? For those who are retired and are not receiving anything, is there anything that can be done for them, like retro, like anything could be passed?
In the hospitality sector you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, so, well, for now, we depend basically on the goodwill of the particular employer to present some incentive to that worker. But like I said, with this pension scheme, it will become that everybody contributes, and they will have something to draw upon at the correct time. It will work both employer and employee contributes to it.
Okay, okay, so I have another question, my second question.
Yes, one second. Last thing I want to mention as well, that's one of the things we want to be pushing for as well is an unemployment benefit, because that has been clearly shown, particularly in this particular period, that we need to have an unemployment benefit. So that's what maybe we're walking towards as well.
I'm very glad to hear that. That is a great initiative. So it has been rumored that the government of Angola has been paying only the interest and not the principal to Social Security for the sum of its $214 million loan from Social Security, as I said, around the year of twenty fifteen. Is this true? And if it is, and another two years would have been added to that, what would have been, what would have, what would that have meant for the stability of Social Security I'm not really sure which government worker, this could go to anyone, I'm guessing.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Okay. It has been rumored that the government of Angola has been paying only the interest and not the principal to the Social Security loan that they have taken around the sum of $214 million from around the year of twenty fifteen. Is this true? And if it is, and another two years would have been added to that, if I'm saying if it's twenty fifteen, it's twenty twenty, that's five years, another two years, that's seven, statutes of limitations, right? And if, and if another two years would have been added to that, what would, what would that have been, what would that have meant for the stability of Social Security today and to the people of Angola?
Thank you for your question. The agreement, the Banking Resolution, the Banking Obligations Act only required that interest be paid for the first five years, so up until next year, only interest payments would be done, and then the principal would start, the amortization starts in twenty twenty-one. So I think, you know, the question would be, if, you know, the $214 million had not been secured, then Social Security would be in a pretty bad state. The obligation we have is to ensure that that $214 million is covered through the consolidated fund. So we're trying to make sure that Social Security is there for the persons, you know, for disability and also for retirement.
Okay, thank you. The second one, the third one from my fourth question. Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, but in the, in general orders, it states that retired civil servants should not be working as a temporary worker in the government department and still collect their pension so they're getting two salaries. Is there or has there ever been any investigation to find out if anyone has been committing such, such an offense? And if not, why not? And if so, what has been the follow-up procedure to correct such?
I'm not sure.
No.
No, I think that, that question, I think, might be better directed towards the permit. Hmm? Oh, okay.
Excuse me?
Sorry?
All right.
Okay.
You let someone else?
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank God.
Just, just really quickly before you start, I just want to do a slight clarification. We don't pay into the pension fund yet because an actuarial study has to be done before those payments can be made, so it's not yet, although there's the intention to do so.
Yes, this question is for Merit, I think you're in charge of sports, right? This question coming to you from the United States of America, and they want me to ask you what happened to the monies that was collected in the game that they had in England. Remember the cricket match and those monies? That, you know, we need to know what happened to that monies. Have you went to Weston or where?
Okay, yes. The monies from that match, originally there was stated that Angola would get all the monies, but Cricket Westonis divided the money amongst all the territories that was damaged by the hurricanes. I think Angola received $74,000, which if you go on the park, you'll see they erected some nets, they purchased some rolling equipment, covers for the fields, and some other equipment. That's what they used for the money. So they didn't receive the full amount because the money was divided amongst all the territories that were damaged by the hurricane.
Okay, thanks. Go on to Minister of Tourism. I mean, unfortunately, you're the Minister of Tourism, but you're the first person to ever fire me from a board. Because, remember, the guy got elected, not elected, he was appointed Parliamentary Secretary, and he fired me as soon as I get, he get in office, he fired me. So I was the first person fired by Mr. Hughes, but I'm now his biggest supporter, so these things do happen. The first time he walked in the room, he said, for you, you're fired. That's okay, but that's okay. Because he told me a while ago there that I will never get back in the Tourism Board, so that's okay. And he's correct. To Ms. Maria, you speak about, you spoke only about the reopening, the phase, but based on what I'm hearing is that the restaurants might not be playing a role in the reopening based on the persons coming to the resort, they're going to stay in the hotel, like they're not going to be able to venture out. But the experience that people come to Angola for is really for the restaurant's food, not the hotel food. So it's something that you need to do, and this is so much not a question, but a suggestion, that you can meet with the different restaurants and see if they can find a way of getting the food to the hotel by means of transportation, because the experience is the food. You know, some people don't like the hotel food, so it's something you need to do, and that will create some more employment within those restaurants, that they can get the food to the hotel because the experience is the food in Angola. So your public can say something.
So thank you for the statement and suggestion. I would have mentioned that we do plan to meet with the restaurateurs in short order. One of the concerns with restaurants is the movement of risk. The whole point of quarantine is to contain the risk in one area. So how restaurants can be a part of that is perhaps through delivery and other forms. And as we move forward, we'd understand in how our product, how we can protect our product, but still also protect our people, restaurateurs and the different restaurants we brought on. But what we want to do in this first phase is to focus on the bubble, and how we would incorporate the restaurants is to encourage delivery. One of the other concerns is that, but they're, they're currently, most of the larger properties, they would have restaurants on property. One of the, one of the One of the, one of the other concerns is, is that um, if we do open our restaurants to guests, do we then open it to locals? Or do we then close down all of our restaurants to locals? So it's not necessarily that they are completely shut out of this phase or that we're not considering it. It's a matter of how do we manage and mitigate the risk in a way that protects the general public of Angola?
Yes, you're correct. But what we, what we are saying here is that, remember, some people that work in the restaurants does not work in the hotel. So what we are saying is because of the face opening and the persons cannot come out, you're going to take away from the experience because the experience is the food. We all know, you know, you got the beer, the, you know, Jack La, the Blanchard and so on. So they want to taste that, that's what they're coming for, that's what they're spending money for. So what we are saying is the delivery will also take away from that because you'll be able to take it to them and they'll be able to serve the same food and have the same experience whereas an island cannot move around. So it wouldn't matter, probably be open, probably the locals can go there because we don't have any COVID. You know, we can go there and dine, but we're talking about for those that coming in. You have to find a way of getting the food to them and one way of delivering. But you need to meet with them collectively and see if you can work something out to accommodate those guests so they can have a experience when they're spending their money.
Uh, if, if I may add to what the Parliamentary Secretary said is that when we, we first came to government, um, we, we did, sorry? When, when we first came to government, we did not even envision that we would have any sort of opening whatsoever for twenty twenty, right? And things continue to evolve. And right now we are in September, the middle of September, and things will continue to evolve. What we're presenting at this moment may look vastly different to what is presented on November first. So as time moves on and, and things evolve outside of Angola, that will determine how we evolve here in Angola. But it also gives rise for opportunities, delivery opportunities and so forth. So those are things that, and at the end of the day, the restaurants will open if they see the ability to turn a profit, right? So all of these things have to be considered. But in all of the service providers, we're engaging with all of the service providers for them to set up their standard operating procedures, SOPs. And we look at them, we have persons that will visit properties, inspect properties to see if they can participate. And as you know, James, we are also doing training for the ground transportation, the taxi drivers and the like, so that everybody can participate in the, in the new COVID economy. The, the, the Permanent Secretary asked a question is after the fourteen days. So at the four, day fourteen, if you stay in place or ten, depends on where you're coming from, once you're medically cleared, then you can venture outside of the property. Now, persons may think that it is intermingling, but the way, the way this is being structured, there'll be a separation. So the Premier just came out of quarantine, right? And there were other persons in the building that were also quarantined. And some people came before him and some people came after him. But he was still able to leave quarantine once he was medically cleared on day fourteen. And I just want to say this though. For those persons that are still asking the question if they can quarantine at home, if the Honorable Premier was subjected to fourteen days government quarantine, then all of us would be subjected to fourteen days government quarantine.
Yeah, but just to touch on what the Permanent Secretary said. No, 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 it just sort of, based on what I was saying, I just wanted something to conclude. No, just to conclude. No, what I'm saying, what the P S just said there, that's why I rushed back on the phone, because you're talking about after the fourteen days. But you got to remember that a lot of the tourists that come to Angola is not going to stay fourteen days. Most of them is three to seven days. Remember that, three to seven days. So you got to make that provision for those. Because those after fourteen days fine, but those who are in villas. But most of them is come for that short time and not that full time.
You can, you can move forward with the next question.
Yes, yes. To the point, a very pleasant good evening to all one and all. I've heard that one of the major hotel properties has laid off a number of persons. Now, COVID nineteen is an unprecedented period in the world. Couldn't they have just said to the persons, you know, go home until such time, we can bring you back? Because this definitive layoff, to me, it troubles me. So I pray that when the hotels open, that these persons can have forced choice for the jobs again, all right? And secondly, my, my next question or statement would be to the Honorable Mr. Hodge to the very end. The teeth that you're going to put into the understudy program. Watch me, sir. I don't want to be paid. I'm sixty. I've gone through all kind of training, Canada, the U.S. and the U.K. I want to be part of that. Don't pay me. I have suffered immensely. But I see engineers come to Angola, stayed for ten years plus, get the passport, go to Canada, U.S., and no one was trained and left behind. We must change it. We must change it. Six eight, six eight, don't believe.
Um, out of dock, in terms of your first point, I would like to remind all the hospitality workers who have been laid off. Make your first port of call the Labour Department. You need to go in to register your circumstances and they can advise you on what courses of action, what options are open to you. If you don't take that, then you, you're robbing yourself of opportunity or proper representation. Because we are aware in some cases that some workers are really being disadvantaged and the Labour Department really is your first port of call in terms of this issue. The second point you raise about the understudy. Let's take an example. If a hotel has an HR manager and has a local understudy, we expect that um, HR manager will train the understudy in all the skills and techniques and whatever else is necessary to take over that job. So some of these understudy programs are particular to the industry and the particular position within the industry. And it is the responsibility of the resort and the particular section to ensure that the skills and competencies, whatever else is necessary, is passed on to the particular employer. We are finding out increasingly that this is just lip service. They say they were doing it and whenever you check, it's not done and then they come back for renewals and renewals. And I'm saying under my watch, that is going to stop.
Fair enough. My question. Good evening, guys. My question is, excuse me, um, maybe to the Premier or to Hayden Hughes. Um, I want to know what is your position just naturally as Angulian when it comes to Sandegrong and this business deal that we're hearing? I don't really care what nobody think, I just want your opinion as Angulian and what, how you stand as Angola government? And that's my question to you.
Thank you for your question, sir. And so there is a definitive agreement that was signed. And that requires an environment impact assessment and a social impact assessment. We are willing as Angola government to let that go through and see what the findings are and go from there. My personal opinion that the Marina in Sandegrong is a good project. However, I want to see what the environmental impact assessment shows, what a social impact assessment shows and to make a final decision on that.
Yes, sir. So when, when you, when you get these, when you get these, when you get these information, what would be your assessment when you realize it would detriment Sandegrong as a environmental, it would be environmental health risk to Sandegrong?
Well, well, if that is the finding, then I certainly wouldn't be in agreement.
Thank you very much.
But I do know that if they are, if there is an assessment done, it shows that whatever risk there is can be mitigated, I mean, it can be taken care of and it doesn't harm the people of Sandegrong and there's no potential caving in as somebody has suggested or poisoning from this hydrogen sulfide gas, then I would certainly raise my hand and say, let's go ahead.
Let me, let me, let me allow you to understand why my question been, been put forward to you. At the end of the day, it's all about Angola.
Certainly.
Yeah, so that's where I came from. As a young person, there's nobody really acting different to the young lady and she was maybe a little ridiculed for it, but I really, I really appreciate it. Young people must be aware of what's happening in Angola. And you must put forward your ideas, have a question, have an idea and actually push it forward.
Definitely, and I think the young people are who are going to be responsible for running this country and carrying the debt that has been racked up, you know? Almost damn half a billion dollars is a lot of debt.
Good evening to the Honorable Premier and the members of your cabinet. Um, let me say first before I ask the question that I am very heartened by the fact that for the first time in Angola's history, we have had a government who has kept its promise and come to the people and give us what is an alarmingly, frighteningly frank assessment of the woeful state of our economy. The challenges are clearly going to be very steep. I hope not insurmountable, but you have willing and able persons whom the people elected. You are the government of Angola and we expect and hope that you will be coming back to us to now tell us how you plan on carving the path up the mountain and over the other side. Because that's what we want to hear next. So my question is directed to the Minister of Social Development. You did mention that there was this Angola programs funding. And that, and I did not get it very clear and I want it clarified, um, that there was thirty-five million of the sixty million um, available. For what exactly was that?
So thirty-two million U.S. dollars would have been allocated to the development of the Albina Lake Hodge Comprehensive School.
And that thirty-two million you have indicated to us is not sufficient to complete the school?
What I've indicated, what's happened is there have been an overrun in relation to the budgets. So the Angola program doesn't just fund the development of schools in Angola. It develops a number of projects across the island that you've seen, the clinics, the health centers, um, some I.T. infrastructure as well. And there has been an overspend on some of the projects, which has um, meant that we've, we've had a reduction in the budget for that program. And in order to deal with that reduction, they have removed some of the items originally supposed to be, originally planned to be completed in that project from the ALHTS program.
Okay, thank you. So just two more questions. This, um, the project started, um, the, the, the project started when? Like for instance, I'm talking about the schools project. For instance, when did the Albina Lake Hodge project start? Can you indicate that to us, please?
It would have started this year.
This year, in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Um, a month, January, February?
March.
March. So that's April, May, June, July, um, August, four months. And are you telling us that there's an overspend on that project, four months in construction?
No, it's not that there's an overspend. It's that they've been, they've had to reduce the money allocated to the project. And so they've taken certain elements of the projects out in order to fit within the confines of the budget left.
Yes, so that, and that's why I'm asking the question because when you use the words overspend, members of the public might get the very wrong impression.
When I said overspend, I was saying it in relation to the entire program. So the entire program, there is an overspend. There is an overspend. And in order to manage the finances, they've had to cut costs across the, the programs.
And then my final question is in relation to the, the projects and completion timelines. Because we are talking about the schools and children getting in the schools and we know that they are managing on very difficult circumstances, shift and all of that with the Albina Lake Hodge School. And I believe some of the primary schools are here and there. Um, what, um, what's the status of the timelines for completion? And where are some of those projects in relation to the timelines for completion and percentage of completion?
So that would vary across projects. Um, I don't have all the, all of them off the top of my head. I do know some. Um, in relation to the Aurelia Kelly Primary School, that is due to be finished by October. It was originally due to be completed by July of this year, but they had some delays along the project and that's pushed it further down into the school year. In relation to the Valley Primary.
Is it now on track to be completed in October?
They have committed themselves to completing it in October. As it relates to the Valley Primary School, as it relates to the Valley Primary School, the projected completion date would be December of this year. The Adrian T. Hazel Primary School.
Is that on track?
We are pushing to ensure that everything finishes on track. There's, there have been significant delays in the projects and that would be due to a number of factors, both material supply and um, issues with the build itself. And we are trying to ensure at every step of the way that we crack the whip in a sense because we understand how important getting these educational projects completed is, are. And we're coming down to make sure that if the contractor has assured us that they will complete by a certain date, that we will be breathing down their back, still sure that it is done on that schedule.
And my final question. Um, and this, I'm drawing from this on my experience as an attorney. Um, I said my final question, I'm just drawing from this question in my experience as attorney, that if some of these projects are not on target, and, and I'm gathering that from some of your hedging answers of course, are there penalties imbuilt in these contracts?
Yes, there are penalties built into contracts for non-completion. Um, if a project is delayed um, by no reason in relation to the contract itself, this is a delay due to the contractor. There is a penalty of a thousand dollars a day.
Yes, and my next and final question always, very final question. It's a buildup, you see. There are delays in some of these contracts. Have any situations arisen in relation to delays where penalties have been invoked because of the delays on the part of the contractors?
That's a good question. I don't have an automatic response for that because I don't, to my knowledge, no. But I can do some more investigation. The accountant would know, that is true. Well, the, the accountant has said no and therefore no penalties have issued, have been issued thus far.
So um, as a member of the public who has a very serious interest in the education of our children and the comfort and how very quickly we can get them into the fit-for-purpose schools that are being given to us, I would like to know that we are holding the persons responsible for building these schools and holding their feet to the fire in keeping with the administration's promise of accountability. So on the next report that we have, we would like to know, have there been delays on the faults of any contractors? And we'd like to know. And we'd like to know when and if the penalties will be enforced. Thank you for taking my questions.
Thank you. Two more questions. Two more questions, I'm sorry. Just to let you know, tonight's presentation, we posted on the government website. Two more questions, please.
Just to, just to, to tie up the questions in relation to the Angola programs, I am going to be coming back to give a more rounded and holistic um update on what's happening specifically with the Angola programs within education.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
I am Calvin Smith from Island Harbour, concerned citizen, police watch and a community man. And I'm thanking the Lord for giving me a premier and for giving me all of his workers with him. Young people, intelligent, delivering and bringing forth to the people what had never come forward to them before. And I'm saying tonight that I appreciate everything and I also want to thank the civil servants for the good job that they have been doing. Give them a round of applause, please. And I also want to be very, I want the Doc to be very careful with the soft opening that we're going to have in Angola and make sure that everything go in the right direction. And I also wanted to make sure that all your ministers of government stay focused. And the prayers of my sister and my family is with you all. And I also wanted, and I also wanted to thank our minister over here for his good work. And thank the Lord for everything. Thank you all. I have um two questions and I'll come in. I'll be brief. Yeah, Mr. Premier, you mentioned that at some time it become compulsory to increase medical fees at a hospital. I am wondering if it would not be wiser to collect some of that money on the street first before we make an increase to make more for the debts on the, the, the health authority again? Because if you increase these fees, you know what's going to happen? You will end up, the health authority will end up with owed more money than it presently owed. So we need to collect some of that money first. Do you think that is a better idea?
Well, I think it's always a good idea to collect what's owed, but the health authority has done several programs and where they have, you know, say pay, if you pay 50% by a certain time, they will write off the rest. There have been several programs done to try to collect. And so I think that, you know, short of a national health insurance, which we are going to work towards, it's really difficult for government to continue increasing the subvention to health authority so that it can stay functional to provide the service. At some point, the fees have to go up to, to help to cut back on some of the requirements from the consolidated fund.
But um this question, I believe you may have to answer this along with somebody who is responsible for social security. Now, we have several jobs going on, construction jobs going on in Angola funded by the British government. And I want to know, not suppose, that all those contractors, they are paying the levy and they are paying the social security. Is that happening? Good. And this is the comment now. I really would feel guilty if I do not mention how much I appreciate Mr. Kyle Hodge in working so far with the Farmers' Association to improve and increase farming in Angola. At no time I had a call of Kyle unless he messaged me and telling me he's trying to get me, I must call him. I never had a call. He always would message me and call me and update me. On my phone, I have maybe 50, 60 messages with the farmer minister of agriculture, either unanswered or barely answered. So I'm happy that we have a minister who's cooperating with us and I hope that he will continue to be so. Thank you.
Quickly, Kyle, I just want one for Kyle. I want to just ask Kyle a question before we go. Kyle, in regards to the license, right? You don't think, I mean, right now, now, right now in Angola, we have supermarkets everywhere, tons of supermarkets in this country. You don't think we are overdoing it in this country in terms of wanting? I mean, it's so much money that they're seeing that we are not. At every, everywhere you turn, left, right and center, a new supermarket is opening. I know you made those probably already sign. But what can we do? You know what I mean? To put a market and that particular industry in this country? And when we finish here, for you, please tell the people of Angola that COVID will come to Angola. But you've got to tell them how you're going to deal with it when it come. They will be isolated, like everywhere we come, you believe you're not going to get it. It will come to Angola. If you're going to open, no matter how you open, it will come.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question. Um, the moratorium that was put in place in the first instance by the previous administration, I believe it was put in place to address the supermarkets themselves. So when we got to office, we extended their moratorium for the same reason. So what you see happening are those supermarkets that have had licenses in before. The construction had already started for those supermarkets. But going forward, there should be no more increases in, in terms of supermarkets in Angola. I think we have enough.
Eldar.
To, to your point, thank you for bringing that up. It was mentioned in our previous press conference. The reality is that we may very well get a case of COVID in Angola. But that is the reason why a structured reopening is important. With three phases of testing, testing prior to arrival, testing upon arrival and testing at the end of the stay-in-place phase, you will have an opportunity to find that person. And once we do, similar to what is currently there for repatriation, although we have not had a case in repatriation, there will be a protocol to follow. All of the approved locations are considered in the eyes of government, government-approved facilities. So if someone is found with COVID at any of the facilities that are part of our program currently, then they will stay there unless, unless they need um medical attention to the point where they have to be extracted and sent to the hospital. So the, the reason why we are reopening and the way that we are opening is to manage and mitigate the risks. Thank you.
Eldar Clive Smith.
Eldar Clive C. Smith. This is, the question goes to the projects, projects that we are dealing with on the 60 million pounds from the government, the British government, right? Question is, it was always envisioned that the 60 million pounds would not be able to carry the scope of things that we are dealing with. And to that effect, I know that there were negotiations with the British government under the leadership of our governor to get some additional money to facilitate and finish up the projects. Mr. Premier, is that not an ongoing situation where we are looking forward that the British government would pitch in and try to supplement or try to finish up the project in a good way? That's the question.
Yes, the governor has said he's continuing to try to find that extra money to finish the projects that have been started.
Thank you very much. God bless you. Good night.
Thank you very much for your questions. And now invite the honorable Mary Richard to the podium to give you a vote of thanks.
Good night again. Okay, I've been tasked with giving the vote of thanks. So first, let me give thanks to the Almighty for bringing us safely here uh tonight. Um, need to give a special thanks to Von Lee Harris and Marissa Harden-Hodge uh for their very detailed and insightful presentations. There's an old saying, men lie, women lie, but numbers don't lie. So we've been presented with the facts tonight. Uh, to my fellow cabinet members, thank you for your presentation on what's next and the way forward for Angola. To our Chairperson, Courtney Morton, job well done, sir. I say a big thank you to all the media outlets that were represented here tonight. We thank you. A big thank you to Ly Gomes, Gaff, Von Hazel and the Dykes team for their live streaming. And the biggest thank you go to you, the audience. Um, yes. We appreciate you for spending your evening with us. I was gonna, I was about to say, we spent almost half a working day here, but we worked 12 hours a day, so we didn't quite reach that. But thank you for spending part of your evening with us. It shows that you're really interested in what's happening in your country and we do appreciate it. So from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you and safe drive home. Thank you.